All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the San Jose City Council to order for the afternoon of April 16th. Welcome. Great to have such a full chamber. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Present.
Candellis.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Latrow.
Present.
Kamay.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by the Alum Rock Youth Science Institute, and Councilmember Cohen will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. The Youth Science Institute at Alum Rock Park recently celebrated their 70-year anniversary. YSI serves to inspire enthusiasm for science and a love of learning through their nature center and school programs, using animal ambassadors to help educate children. YSI at Alum Rock typically serves 10,000 children in programs and 8,000 visitors to their nature center annually. YSI at Alum Rock Park is open to the public, and any visitor to the park can enter their center and view their exhibits and see the animals. Unfortunately, the road into Alum Rock Park was partially washed out during the rainstorms in early 2023, and for over a year, the only way to visit YSI was to walk in by foot. This constrained their ability to bring students for field trips and significantly reduced their number of visitors. And I'm glad that, as of this spring, the road has reopened and YSI is accessible again. The newest animal on display in the new outdoor enclosure is a turkey vulture. But we're very excited today to have three of their staff here with three of their animal ambassadors. We have Erica Buck, Executive Director, Alex Shord, our The Animal Curator, who will be presenting the animal ambassadors here today, and Catherine Kazmarsky, Board Member. Welcome, and come on up.
Hi. Thank you so very much. My name is Erica Buck. I am the Executive Director for Youth Science Institute. And just real quickly to share, we are very excited because today is the first day that we were able to have a school program come back on a bus since November of 2022 due to the road. So we're very happy about that. Introducing Catherine Kazmarsky, our Board Member. And now I would love to turn it over to Alex Shord, our Animal Curator, to talk about our educational ambassadors.
Hello. So let's start with always a crowd favorite. This is Scout. Scout is actually one of our three birds we have at Alum Rock. He is our, he is actually, like all of our birds, he's a rescue, which means that he cannot be released back into the wild. Despite his size, he is actually an old man. This is as big as he gets, and they're not even the smallest of the snakes, sorry, of the owls found in the Bay Area. Now, Scout unfortunately was hit by a car, so unfortunately, he cannot fly very well because his wing got healed, but it healed wrong. So that's why he's with us. We believe that by now he has a new job of, a new job of teaching children and the public. We believe it's very important for kids to be able to meet and interact with animals that they normally would not be able to see in the wild, because despite them being very common in the Bay Area, most people have not actually seen a live owl in the, seen a live owl. So Scout despises size. He is full grown. They actually, part of that is actually because he's a male, a boy. The females are slightly bigger. But yeah, so now I'm going to bring out my next animal. My next animal friend, well, who here knows the California state reptile? Raise your hand. Who here knows that the California has a state reptile? Raise your hand. Well, I actually have brought our California state reptile. Our California state reptile is actually a tortoise from Southern California. So these guys are not found here, but they are found from, found in the LA area. This is Daisy. Daisy is a California desert tortoise. They, she's actually in her 90s. And that's not even, that is, they actually do live a long time. Certain tortoises can live up to 200 years old. That might be because she loves her beauty sleep. California desert tortoises, despite living in the desert, they have a great way to survive the snow and cold of Southern California in the winter. They actually broomate, which means that they go into a deep sleep where they don't eat or drink anything for half the year. She actually only woke up about a month ago. Before that, she didn't eat a single, eat a single thing since November, or sorry, October. But yeah, these guys, you actually tell their age by the rings on their shell. Just like tree rings, every couple of years, they grow a single ring, and so you can actually count the rings and multiply that by a certain amount to get her age. Okay. So lastly, I actually bring the second largest snake from the Bay Area. The second largest snake in the Bay Area is actually one that you might actually be scared if you saw it in the wild, because you might actually mistake it for our only dangerous snake, the rattlesnake. The Pacific gopher snake is the second largest, only smaller than the rattlesnake themselves. But these guys, they actually pretend to be rattlesnakes. They want you to think they're rattlesnakes. These guys, if you see them, they will shake their tail, which against the leaves actually sounds like a rattlesnake, and they'll even flatten their head to make themselves look more like a rattlesnake. These guys love the sun. These guys love the sun even more than most snakes. They are actually known for, for, they love to just, you might see them on the trail, because they love to go against, on the cement and just lay across the ground. But they tend to be pretty calm, and as long as you leave them alone, just like all their snakes, even the rattlesnakes, all the native snakes here, you just leave them alone, and they'll leave you alone. So me, my animal friends, and the rest of YSI would like to thank you guys in the city of San Jose for your continued support and your time. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. I want to just invite you all back up to Alum Rock Park to stop by and see these and other animals in their center. And I also just, I just learned today that Councilmember Foley's, was it, mother-in-law, Shirley Foley, was one of the founders of the Youth Science Institute. So we're, that was just that connection. I wanted to make sure we acknowledge that. Seventy-one years ago. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, and thank you to the Alum Rock Youth Science Institute. That was one of the more entertaining invocations we've had in a while. We're on to ceremonial items. Councilmember Torres, if you'd join me at the podium, we will recognize Haley Cardeman, founder of San Jose Day.
Well, who can go after Scout? What a cute owl. And a tortoise, and a snake. So all cute little critters from our beautiful Alum Rock Youth Institute. All right. So today we come together with immense joy and pride to celebrate, to celebrate somebody, to celebrate someone who embodies the very soul of our city, Haley Cardeman. I said that right, right? Okay, good. Born and raised in San Jose. Yes, round of applause to Haley. Born and raised in San Jose, Haley isn't just a local. She's a visionary leader who has left an unforgettable mark in our community. As the founder and executive producer of San Jose Day, the annual festival, Haley has transformed our city's cultural landscape since its launch in 2017. 408 Day, or San Jose Day, has become a highlight in our calendar, drawing an impressive 30,000 attendees every year. And through Haley's leadership, the festival has become a vibrant showcase of our local talent and businesses. The festival is all about San Jose, the greatest city in the world. What truly sets Haley apart is her unwavering commitment to community engagement and service. She tirelessly works to involve diverse groups and communities across San Jose, ensuring not only she benefits, but that our beautiful city of San Jose benefits as well. Haley, your dedication to uniting and uplifting our community is truly inspiring. We thank you for your vision and passion, and we eagerly anticipate the continued impact of your work. Thank you, Haley. And then Mayor, let's provide her the beautiful commendation. Oh, that's right. Haley.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Thank you for this acknowledgement. It is an honor, and I am humbled to be recognized by the city of San Jose. My name is Haley Cardeman. I'm the founder and executive producer of the annual festival, San Jose Day. It's a festival that celebrates the culture of San Jose, and it's also an act of cultural preservation as well as a collective display of pride for San Jose. The sixth annual San Jose Day was a success with over 8,000 attendees, 84 vendors, five musical performances, three dance performances, and 102 gallery artists. I am excited and inspired to continue working on this project to host the seventh annual San Jose Day in April 2025. I am also proud to announce that I'm taking the next step towards economic sustainability and compliance by starting a 501(c)(3) nonprofit called Spark Community Productions, which is dedicated to enriching our community's cultural landscape through the arts and by organizing and supporting diverse cultural productions. I would also, at this time, like to plant the seed and ask the council to consider supporting San Jose Day regardless of what district the event resides in, because San Jose Day truly is for everyone in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you, Haley.
Appreciate it.
Oh, Ellen and, oh, we're in an emcee here.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. And I do have one more thing to say is that I'm appreciative of this award and in turn would like to commemorate Councilmember Omar Torres and Kiara Ariola for their dedication and enthusiasm to the sixth annual San Jose Day, and we created a hand-cut and painted plaque for you.
Aw, thank you. Aw, this is great. Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I love this. Councilmember Cohen, please join me at the podium, and we will recognize the 2024 Climate Smart Champion Award recipients.
And at this point in time, we'll have everybody who's a recipient come on down and stand up here with, behind me. We also have staff from the Environmental Services Department and Clean Energy Department and Transportation Department. Did I get them all? Oh, and PBCE all joining us as well up here as we recognize our honorees.
Push together a little bit more like we like to. A little bit more this way, to the right, to the right, to the right.
All right. I think we're just about ready. I'll get started. It's my pleasure to sponsor this year's Climate Smart Champion ceremonial item on the agenda today. It's very appropriate that we celebrate our Climate Smart Champions as we approach Earth Day, which is next Monday, April 22nd. We are recognizing climate champions in six categories: energy, water conservation, mobility, youth, equity, and champion of the year. We began celebrating Climate Smart Champions in 2019, and this is our fifth annual celebration. Climate Smart Champions embody the city's Climate Smart San Jose initiative to reduce air pollution, save water, and improve quality of life while meeting the greenhouse gas emission reduction targets of the Paris Agreement. The initiative is one of the city's plans to address climate change in partnership with city departments and our community. The champions we are honoring today have demonstrated a commitment and passion to protecting the environment. The awardees were nominated by their friends and neighbors for their positive impact they make on our environment and the city. They're great role models for all of us to emulate. They also have been advocates within their own sphere of influence for, to encourage urgent environmental actions, because we can no longer wait to take action, and we must do something now to stop climate change. So I'm going to introduce each of this year's champions. I think rather than, we'll just wait till the end and then hand them the plaques at the same time, rather than try to do it one at a time. But let me just give a little bit about each. Our climate, our energy champion this year is Rising Sun Center for Opportunity. They conduct greenhouse calls and provide free residential energy and water efficiency service to pollution-burdened neighborhoods and non-English-speaking households. So thank them. Congratulations. Our water conservation champion this year is Girl Scout Troop 62735. They've been revitalizing gardens focused on California native plants, promoting biodiversity, and enhancing the community's understanding of conservation. Congratulations, Troop 62735. Our mobility champion is Good Karma Bikes. They provide essential transportation by refurbishing bicycles and granting them to individuals in need. Congratulations to Good Karma Bikes. Our youth champion this year is June DeCayet. She's a, sorry, sorry, I said, sorry, DeLaCaillat. She is a dedicated gardener and social justice activist advocate, practicing sustainable lifestyle, and as an intern for Californian native garden foundations, diverts food waste through composting. So congratulations, June. Our equity champion is Breathe California. They collaborate with Climate Smart to promote electric vehicle adoption and clean mobility options in disadvantaged neighborhoods. Thank you, Breathe California. Our champion of the year is Daphne Zhu. Daphne is a high school student who co-leads the San Jose team of the Silicon Valley Youth Climate Action by spearheading student activism and volunteering on community environmental projects. Unfortunately, Daphne is on a field trip today and wasn't able to join us. We have Hoipun here, over there somewhere, on her behalf to accept the recognition today. So I want to thank all of these awardees, give them all a round of applause for their great service. So it's really, really important work. And now I'm going to invite June DeLaCaillat up. She has a few words to share.
I'm here because the city of San Jose is awarding me for being a climate hero. Believe me, I am so proud of myself for receiving this. But I cannot put aside the glaring hypocrisy of the city of San Jose to award anybody a title like "climate hero" when our tax dollars are currently being funneled into the massacre of an indigenous population halfway across the globe, as well as tons upon tons of carbon dioxide, particulate matter, and countless other pollutants that are, that the bombs being set off are releasing. City Council of San Jose, I cannot in good faith accept this award until every last one of you call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you for your time. Free Palestine.
All right. So now we're going to hand out the awards. I think the mayor has them to hand out to each of the recipients. Thank you so much, and we'll do one more round of applause when we get all the plaques handed out. Thank you so much, and we'll do one more round of applause when we get all the plaques handed out. Well, thank you all. We're going to take a few photos and.
All right. And last but not least, I would like to recognize the Red Cross of Silicon Valley, a beacon of hope in times of crisis, a pillar of support, and a symbol of unity in our community. Red Cross representatives, if you'd like to come down here, please do. We've got a bit of traffic going up the stairs. As you come down, I'll share a little more. I've been really inspired by the dedication and tireless work of the volunteers and staff of the Red Cross Silicon Valley. Eighty percent of the amazing work done by the Red Cross is done by volunteers, and ninety percent of every dollar donated goes to helping those in need. Just this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to participate in their Sound the Alarm event. Nationally, American Red Cross goes to more than fifty at-risk communities across the country and installs fifty thousand smoke alarms. Is that per year? Wow, that's incredible, per year. I joined Red Cross Silicon Valley CEO Ken Torren to install smoke alarms at Mountain Springs Mobile Home Park on Hillsdale Avenue this past weekend. Like to remind all of you that having a working smoke alarm increases your chance of surviving a home fire by fifty percent. So please check yours. The battery is rated for about ten years, but you should check them regularly. Whether it's responding to natural disasters, providing vital humanitarian aid, or offering critical support to our communities, the Red Cross remains steadfast in its mission to alleviate suffering and bring hope to those facing adversity. Just another example of this, during the atmospheric rivers just over a year ago, when we stood up emergency evacuation centers, the Red Cross showed up and staffed those centers. They did tremendous work to protect our most vulnerable neighbors. Now I'd like to invite Jesse Gary from K T V U Fox Two News to tell us more about the organization's work and Red Cross Month, which just just took place in March. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor. A smattering of applause. I I will start by by saying I concede that this is a little bizarre to see me here in this capacity, talking to the council as opposed to listening to what you're saying. But that's how we're going to go for for just this one day. I stand before you to to talk about some current events that you may be familiar with and then a couple that maybe you aren't. Over the weekend, I was sitting and listening to a friend's son at his bar mitzvah when both my work and my personal phone erupted with messages and alerts because Iran had launched a drone attack against Israel. Anybody hear about that? Yeah, okay. Just just a couple of days, just before that, hours, days before that, there was a famous turned infamous athlete who had been tried and acquitted of killing his ex-wife and her friend. He passed away from cancer. And my phone blew up. People, where were you when this happened? Do you think he did? Did anybody hear about that? Okay, all right. Here are a couple of things that happened around the same time. Did you happen to hear about the family in Katati that was displaced by a house fire? And they're out of their homes. Did you happen to hear about the three people in Stockton who also out of their homes? They can't live in their home because someone in a vehicle ran into the house, and now the house is red-tagged. And they have, you know, desperate need because they don't have a home. What about the Watsonville family and their pets? Forced from their home by a natural disaster, now they're getting assistance. The the three events that I mentioned that apparently no one heard about, those events happened all in Northern California. They affect people from Northern California and tangentially possibly affect us as well because they have friends and relatives here in the Bay Area. The Silicon Valley Red Cross and the Red Cross in Northern California responded to each of those events and many, many more. You see, the Red Cross cares more than just about blood, and I don't want to minimize that. I've got friends on the city council who came out. Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Cohen came out for our blood blood drive, and and that is critically important. I don't want to undersell that. One in seven people who wind up getting hospitalized, they are they are in need of a blood transfusion. So that's important. But every eight minutes, the Red Cross and its volunteers respond to someone who is involved in some type of disaster or natural disaster here in the U.S. The mission of the Red Cross nationally, internationally, locally, right here where you live, would not be possible to help these people without an army of volunteers. Ninety percent of the Red Cross is staffed by volunteers. Their efforts are enhanced by community partners and people trained in healthcare arts and sciences and safety skills. Last month was the Red Cross's annual Red Cross Month Celebration, where we had a gala in San Francisco. Ken was there. And we honored the commitment of these special people and their original families, et cetera. Their humanitarian spirit advances the lifesaving legacy of the Red Cross that was started with its founder, Claire Barton. Now, it's been a hundred and forty years since she started the Red Cross, started this work to prevent, if possible, but definitely alleviate suffering for people when they are in tragedy. Just last weekend, the mayor heard the mayor talk about it. He was at the Sound Alarm Event where he, chief sapient of the Fire Department, a lot of the Fire Department personnel, Councilmember Doan was there as well, right? They show up for the Sound of Alarm, Sound the Alarm Event. What is that? The mayor talked about it. That's installing smoke detectors in homes, which is critically important. House fire claims seven lives every day across the country. It sounds like a statistic, but I can tell you from covering house fires, one ten years ago in Philadelphia, Christmas tree, presents packed around the tree, the tree is plugged in to an outlet with lots of different plugs. There's a short, the presents catch fire, it catches a tree fire, the house goes up, three kids are dead. I can tell you that house fires are devastating, and they are easy to prevent. So how do you prevent them? Sound the alarm, smoke detectors. A hundred and fifty-four smoke detectors were installed in a hundred homes just this past Saturday with the help of the mayor. From what I understand, you not only know tech, you also know hammer and nail. So you're handy.
It was actually a drill.
Well, close enough. See, I'm not even, I thought a drill was a hammer. See, I'm not even that savvy. But volunteers like the mayor and the others who showed up, sixty volunteers, that makes a real difference. America is at an inflection point, a cultural inflection point, economic, societal. You can you can feel it. It's palpable. You can feel that things are out of whack. In times of crisis, in times of tumult, one thing has been constant over the past hundred and forty years, and that's the Red Cross's commitment to help people in need. So now the ask. I got through the speech, now the ask. How can you help the Red Cross? Well, you can donate blood. Councilmembers can tell you, it's not that hard. You can donate blood. You can also become a disaster action team member and help respond to some of these disasters. And lastly, financial support. Ninety percent of the money that's donated goes directly to the people who need it. So every little bit helps. Of course, folding money is always the nicest. With that, I'm going to yield the balance of my time and say thank you to the council and thank you to all of you for your time.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm really tempted to turn the tables and ask Jesse some very difficult follow-up questions, but I'm going to restrain myself. Ken, do you want to say a word? I know we're about at time, but if you wanted to add anything to Jesse's.
Just to amplify what Jesse said, that the city has been extraordinarily supportive of all the things that Jesse mentioned, the blood drives. The Fire Department has been behind all of the Sound the Alarm, particularly Councilmember Doan has been just terrific. And so we can't do it alone. And when things happen, when we had the shelters during the the atmospheric rivers, and we had a hundred percent of the people there served were unhoused, it was it was a village. It was the county and the city and a lot of organization, nonprofit organizations working together. So just want to thank the city and thank the mayor and thank the council members for all their support.
Okay, we are on to Orders of the Day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I'm not seeing any. Today's meeting will be adjourned in memory of Stephen Timothy Quigley Jr., known to everyone as Tim, who passed away on March fifteenth, 2024. Tim was a thirty-year naval veteran who found his way to San Jose and developed a passion for community involvement and government, serving on the board of the San Jose Dublin Sister City Program. Tim's selfless service to the community, to the San Jose community will be his legacy, and his memory will continue to inspire and motivate others. Councilmember Foley, please tell us more.
I'm honored today to recognize the life of Stephen Timothy Quigley Jr., known as Tim, who passed away March fifteenth, as the mayor said, at the age of seventy-eight after a long illness. Born in Wabasha, that's probably mispronounced, Minnesota, where he became an Eagle Scout, and then finding his way to San Jose where he lived for nearly half a century. Tim served his career for over thirty years, served his country for over thirty years as a naval officer. He was a P-three pilot and conducted surveillance operations around the Pacific Rim. He was a Vietnam veteran, having served three tours of duty. During these surveillance exercises, he was instructed to not intervene in refugee activity. But ignoring people in danger is not part of Tim's character. Noticing a sinking refugee boat, he signaled that these refugees needed help, and help came. This act saved lives and speaks to the ethics and character that makes up Tim. He retired after receiving the rank of captain in nineteen ninety-four and was the commanding officer involved in decommissioning Moffett Field. While at Moffett Field, he worked with Supervisor Rod Diridon in his efforts to bring the light rail to Moffett Field and Mountain View area. Tim's naval career led him to the next chapter of his life in San Jose, where he pursued citizen diplomacy. He worked tirelessly to promote peace by building community through his many philanthropic activities that included the Rotary Club of San Jose, San Jose Police Foundation, and the San Jose Symphony, among many others. Tim served as a corporate and nonprofit executive, but what inspired him most was his passion for community involvement and government. One of Tim's longest run, longest-lasting roles was on the board of the San Jose Dublin Sister City Program, where he led efforts to create the Pat McMahon Masters Level Scholarship Program, which provides an academic internship for students at San Jose State University and Dublin City University. His involvement continued to grow at Sister Cities, and he served as the board chair of Sister Cities International and president of the Sister Cities International Foundation, which he helped to create. And the Sister City International Foundation has actually created a scholarship in his name. A regular presence at San Jose City Council meetings and other government and community events, Tim was a respected civic leader with seemingly inexhaustible energy. Tim's selfless service to the San Jose community will be his legacy, and his memory will continue to inspire others. I am grateful to Tim for his service to our country and the greater community here in San Jose. He inspired many to build community by promoting peace. While he wore many hats, perhaps citizen diplomat is the one that describes him the best. I am pleased to have known Tim and privileged to adjourn this meeting in his name. In the audience today is his is his son, Aaron Quigley, and Tim's partner of twenty years, Seoshi Hashimoto. Aaron, would you like to say a few words?
Good afternoon. On behalf of Seoshi Hashimoto, my dad's partner of more than twenty years and the rest of the Quigley family, thank you, Councilmember Foley, Mayor and the council, for taking time to remember my dad. Dad loved this building. He loved this room for the progress it represented for his adopted town of San Jose. It's an acquired taste, but we shared a love of your long council meetings and the shenanigans that often led to your compromises every week. And I think especially he loved those meetings when when they were at their messiest and most raucous. He loved that because this messiness isn't a flaw, but a hallmark of a functioning democracy. And he was proud of what we all come together to build every Tuesday and every day here in this town. He inspired me and my siblings, Ashley, Nathan, and Josh, to lives of public service, and I hope his memory does the same for others. Thank you again for taking time to remember him this way.
Thank you, Aaron, for sharing that powerful reflection with us. We will deeply miss Tim. This is a huge loss for our entire community. And of course, we know for your family, our thoughts and prayers are with you. Thank you, Councilmember Foley. We are on to the Closed Session Report, and we do have a couple of exciting announcements out of Closed Session. I will start with the appointment of our new independent police auditor, Eddie Aubrey, who's here in the audience with us. And Eddie, in just a moment, I'll ask you to come down and say a few words here at the podium. Eddie received the unanimous vote from the council in Closed Session earlier. He is a highly experienced and accomplished professional with only forty years of experience that really runs the gamut. He has he has worked on community safety issues from virtually every angle, from being a patrol officer at the very beginning of his career to coordinating campus safety at a community college, to being a judge pro tem, to doing civilian oversight, doing this kind of work now for about fifteen years. Most recently, comes to us from the city of Richmond, where he is the civilian manager of the Office of Professional Accountability, which is essentially the Internal Affairs function in San Jose. But he's the civilian oversight embedded within the department. You know, his perspective on how to bring people together and really build trust around a good, open, transparent, fair process that ensures that everyone's interests are fairly represented in the process, I think is is really commendable. I really appreciate his vision. I know he's going to do a lot to carry on the work that Karen Sununu Towery, who has been our acting IPA for about nine months now, has done to really close and deepen that working relationship between the IPA and Internal Affairs to make sure that we're doing proper oversight and audit of the investigation. to make sure that we're doing proper oversight and audit of the investigations that are being done within the department. So, I want to thank Karen for stepping in at a tumultuous moment, stabilizing the office, helping us to staff up and improve our processes. We'll be hearing Karen's report later today. And congratulations, Eddie, and welcome to the San Jose team. And now, I'd like to ask you to come down and just take a moment to share whatever you'd like with the council and the community. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to tell you that I'm honored and privileged to have been appointed by the mayor and the council as the independent police auditor. It is a real privilege and honor to do this work. I also want to let you know that I did meet with the IPA staff this morning, and it's very professional staff. I look forward and very excited to working with them. Also, I wanted to thank Karen Sununu Towery for her service as acting IPA auditor there. She's done a fantastic job in building the office, so I wanted to thank her. Also, I did get an opportunity to meet interim chief Joseph a little while ago, so it's a pleasure meeting him and part of his staff. I look forward to working with them also. As far as the community, I look forward towards the opportunity to engage with the diverse communities in San Jose to advance police accountability and to enhance police services. That has always been a passion of mine and throughout my life, is to make a difference and add value. That North Star has always been my purpose, and I'm glad to be here in San Jose to continue serving that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie. Once again, welcome and congratulations. All right, now I'll turn to our city manager, Jennifer McGuire, to share her update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very pleased to announce the unanimous city council confirmation of Eric Louise Sullivan as the new Director of Housing. Eric will assume the position on May 13th, 2024. As the Director of Housing, Eric will lead the department with an annual operating budget of $19 million with more than 100 employees. He will be responsible for six core services, including affordable housing portfolio management, affordable housing production and preservation, homelessness interventions and solutions, neighborhood capital investment and public services, rent stabilization and tenant protections, and housing department strategic support. Eric comes to the city with over 17 years of success leading complex, affordable workforce and homeless housing projects, including finance, policy, and development work. He is an experienced executive with deep expertise in public-private partnerships, mixed income and mixed-use housing, mixed-source financing and housing and urban development policies and programs. His experience includes, as Chief Development Officer and then Chief of Staff of the Tulsa Housing Authority, Eric led the efforts to add and preserve over 1,700 units of Tulsa's affordable housing stock. As CEO of his own company, Eric served as attorney and consultant to several clients seeking affordable housing development through mixed-source project financing, real estate acquisition, and development. As Executive Director of Denver's Office of Housing and Opportunity, Eric led Denver's first $150 million housing fund for the production of 400 workforce housing units and the acquisition and preservation of 600 affordable housing units. As Executive Vice President and then Senior Vice President for the Philadelphia Housing Authority, Eric directed the organization's highest priority initiatives, including a $500 million investment in the Designated Choice Neighborhood Initiatives to revitalize two communities in North Philadelphia and to preserve 3,500 affordable housing units. Eric holds a Juris Doctor from Rutgers University Law School in Cambrun, New Jersey, and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from Haverford College in Pennsylvania. Before I ask Eric to come up, I want to sincerely thank Rosalynn Huey for holding two positions, one as Deputy City Manager and the other as Acting Director of Housing since July 2023. Her leadership and dedication to our community and the department are so valued, and we are very fortunate and grateful that Rosalynn was able to run with both positions. With that, please join me in congratulating Eric, and Eric, please come up.
Thank you, Jennifer McGuire. Thank you, Lee Wilcox. To Rosalynn Huey and to Dolan Beckel and just the whole team, who's been incredibly supportive in helping me get to this day. And thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council. I look forward to working with all of you to address the challenges the city has and to seize upon the opportunities we have before us. So, we look forward to this, and to all the stakeholders out there, I look forward to engaging with all of you to talk about ways we can leverage our dollars, ways we can come up with innovative solutions to bring about true opportunity and more housing throughout the city of San Jose. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Eric, and congratulations as well. Nora, do we have anything else out of closed session that we need to report?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Next is the consent calendar. Are there any items that the council would like to pull from consent? Okay, not seeing any. Do we have a motion?
Approval of consent.
Thank you. Great. Counselor Cohen, second by Counselor Foley. Do we have public comment on consent?
There are no cards.
Okay, back to the council. Not seeing any hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. We are on to item 3.1. Reported by the city manager, Jennifer, do you have anything else?
I have no other report today. Thank you.
Okay, great. We are on to item 3.3. This is the TEFRA hearing and approval of the sale and issuance of San Jose Airport Revenue Refunding Bonds and related bond documents. I have a script. Oh, I'm sorry. We'll do the staff presentation first, and then we will get into the script.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rick Bruno, the Director of Finance, and I'm joined today by Mookie Patel, Director of Aviation, and Chin Yusun, Deputy Director of Finance over our Debt and Treasury Management Division. We're also supported by representatives from the financing team in the audience, including the City Attorney's Office, Bond Council, and our municipal advisors. This action represents the culmination of over six months of hard work from this team, and I'd like to publicly thank them for their efforts. We are here to seek approval of the sale and issuance of San Jose Airport Revenue Refunding Bonds and related bond documents that will be referenced throughout the presentation as Series 2024A Bonds. Since the transaction involves issuance of tax-exempt debt, the IRS requires the city to hold a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing. The TEFRA hearing affords the public an opportunity to comment on the debt issuance and use of such proceeds, and will serve a dual purpose. Number one, the TEFRA hearing is required for the issuance of the 2024A refunding bonds. And two, the current TEFRA on file for issuance of tax-exempt notes under the airport's commercial paper program expires in September of 2024. Since the TEFRA hearing is required for the issuance of the refunding bonds, it made sense to include the commercial paper in the TEFRA notice to seek approval of both at the same time. This TEFRA hearing will be valid for three years. I'll start off by providing a background on the airport's commercial paper program. Commercial paper serves as a short-term financing tool for airport capital projects, and there are three separate series which can be issued. Series A is a non-AMT, that's alternative minimum tax. Series B, AMT, and then Series C is a taxable note. The airport is authorized by council to issue commercial paper notes up to $600 million, while currently only $75 million is supported by a letter of credit from the Bank of America. Series B notes are tax-exempt, private activity notes, and there are no notes currently outstanding. Next, I'll provide background on the airport refunding bonds. The action today authorizing the sale and issuance of the 2024A bonds will refund the 2014 Series A, B, and C bonds as we have reached the 10-year call date. The 2014 bonds were refinancing of debt issued in 2001 and 2004 for certain costs of the airport runway improvement projects that were completed in October of 2002, as well as other security-related capital improvements to airport facilities. The table below shows the breakdown of the original issuance amounts and outstanding principal amounts for the refunded 2014 ABC bonds. And in total, there is $77.6 million outstanding that will be refunded with the 2024A bonds. I'll now turn it over to Chin Yusun to conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Rick. So, as of right now, airport has outstanding bonds from 2014, 2017, and 2021 issuances. The 2014 bonds are subject to optional redemption after March 1st, 2024. We would like to issue not to exceed $85 million in 2024A bonds to refund all or portion of the outstanding 2014 bonds. The purpose of this refinancing is to restructure the remaining debt service of the 2014 bonds and generate net present value savings. The refund needs to meet the city's net present savings requirements as stipulated in the debt management policy and other requirements in the master trust agreement. The city intends to finance the 2024A bonds through a direct placement approach. In this approach, the city issued a request for proposal last fall for a direct placement agent and selected Raymond James. Later on, Raymond James, on behalf of the city, issued a direct purchase RFP, and we received six proposals through the RFP solicitation. In February 2024, the evaluation team deemed the proposal from the TD Public Finance as the most favorable to the city. In this direct placement approach, a public offering document is not required. Neither do we need to acquire credit rating for the 2024A bonds. In this approach, there is less administrative burden on the city staff. So, the 2024 bonds will be purchased entirely directly by TD Public Finance, bearing a fixed interest cost of not more than 5% annually. On the charts, in the charts on the right side of the slides are showing the estimated use and sources and then debt service as of March 2024. At that time, we estimate the refunding will generate about $2.5 million or 3.2% of net present value saving. But since then, the market has moved significantly. We've seen rate increase quite a bit, especially after the new release of the CPI number and then the retail sales information as of yesterday. So, interest rates have increased significantly. We have seen decrease in net present savings value since the March estimate. So, TD has expressed interest to the city to work with the city, wait for the market to move in the city's favor, to close the transaction in order for us to achieve a 3% saving level as required by the debt management policy. The payment for the 2024A is secured solely by the general airport revenue. The general fund of the city is not liable for any of the principal interest payment for the bonds. Neither is the city's taxing power or full credit pledge to the bond payment. There is no reserve requirement for the 2024A bonds, and the bond will not participate in the general account of the bond reserve fund. With this financing, we obtained a lot of help from the external team. We have two financial advisors for this deal, PFM and Prague. Our bond counsel is Oryc Harrington and Sutcliffe. The placement agents, as we talked about, is Raymond James and Associates. The bond will be purchased solely by TD Public Finance. TD retained Chapler and Cutler as its counsel. The trustee as the rest of the airport bonds will be Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company. We also have a verification agent. Since this is a refunding bond, the verification agent is Robert Thomas CPA. There are three key documents for the council to review and approve. The first one is a 22nd supplemental resolution, which authorizes the issuance of 2024A bonds and the execution of related bond financing documents. The next one is a 13 supplemental trust agreement, which stipulates the terms of repayment, responsibilities of the trustee, and the rights of the bondholders. The last is a purchase and continuing covenant agreement, which sets forth the terms of the purchase, includes ongoing covenants, and provides some for certain contingent expenses. The last slide shows the full text of the recommendation for the council to approve and review. We end our presentation at this time, and I will open for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We need to now open the TEFRA hearing, and I will read the following script to do so. Good afternoon. The city of San Jose, California is proposing to issue, one, one or more separate issues of Series B subordinated commercial paper notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $600 million. And two, one or more separate issues of tax-exempt revenue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $85 million. The notes and the bonds are expected to be issued as tax-exempt facility bonds for airport facilities pursuant to Section 142A1 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code requires that for the interest on such notes and bonds to be excluded from gross income for federal income tax purposes, the city must approve the issuance of the notes and the bonds following a public hearing after reasonable public notice has been provided. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to a notice published on April 9th, 2024 in the San Jose Post Record, a newspaper of general circulation within the city of San Jose. The notes will be payable solely from and will be secured by a pledge of surplus revenues and certain other funds held or made available under a third amended and restated issuing and paying agent agreement as amended between the city of San Jose and U.S. Bank National Association as issuing and paying agent. The bonds will be payable solely from and will be secured by a pledge of general airport revenues and certain other funds after certain maintenance and operation costs are paid, held, or made available under a trust agreement between the city of San Jose and the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company, N.A., as trustee. The general fund of the city of San Jose is not liable, and the credit or taxing power of the city of San Jose is not pledged for the payment of the principal of or interest on the notes or the bonds. This hearing is the opportunity for all interested persons to speak or submit written comments about the proposal to issue the notes and the bonds and the nature or location of the improvements to be financed. Would anyone like to submit any written comments? Tony, do we have any written comments?
We do not.
Would anyone like to speak at this time?
We have no cards.
Okay, thank you. This hearing is now adjourned. Okay, now that the council, I'm sorry, now that the hearing is closed, council will need to consider Part B for item 3.3. Part B states, "Adopt the 22nd supplemental resolution of the city council authorizing the extension and delivery of one or more supplemental trust agreements and one or more purchase and continuing covenant agreements, providing for the issuance of city of San Jose Airport Revenue Refunding Bonds in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $85 million, prescribing the terms, conditions, and form of said series of bonds, and authorizing and approving other related actions." Okay, we will now entertain questions or a motion.
I forgot to push my hand.
Councilmember Foley.
You know, you think after so many days in front of this, I'd know to push my hand. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question about the target rate and the refunding of the bonds. So, it looks like we're hoping to achieve- So, it looks like we're hoping to achieve a savings of 3.2%. So, what is our, is that correct?
The 3.2% is estimated as of March. Our goal is to achieve a net present savings of 3%.
3% savings?
Yes.
And, so what is the rate today?
We just had the estimate to fresh out yesterday, as of yesterday, the rate for the refunding bonds would be 4.2%. That's a coupon rate.
So, the 4.2% is not the rate, that would be the savings?
That would be not the saving, sorry, you're asking for the savings. So, as of yesterday, the saving is less than 2%, 1.9%.
Okay. So, but there is a trigger with the TD Public Finance that they're not going to refund the bonds until they reach our target rate.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's the hope, yeah. We're going to wait until the market to move in our direction so we can reach the 3% saving before we close the deal.
Given where the market is going, do we think that's going to be achievable?
We're hoping for, nobody has--
Look in your crystal ball.
Nobody has a crystal ball, but we're hoping for, there's some volatility going on, especially with the recent development and then delay, possible delay of the Fed's action on reducing interest rate. But we hope with time, the market will come our way, or at least a window will evident itself that we can close the deal.
Great, thank you. This is a good tool for us to use when we can realize some savings. It's like refinancing your mortgage to lower your interest rates, and rates may not be at that point yet, and they're not there yet, but hopefully they will be. With that, I will move authorization of this item.
Thank you, councilmember. I heard Councilmember Batra first with the second. Any other questions? Councilmember Batra, go ahead.
When you refer to the true rate, is that the coupon rate?
The 4.2% I referred earlier was the new coupon rate for the refunding bonds. The 1.9% is a net present value saving estimated as yesterday comparing the refunding bonds and then the refunded bonds.
Okay. So, when you say not to exceed 5%, is that the coupon rate you're talking about?
That is correct. That's the 5% coupon rate.
Okay. So, anywhere between 1% and 5% is what you're hoping coupon rate will be?
Yeah, we're trying to, we'll limit the coupon rate less than 5%.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further hands, Tony, we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Ortiz absent.
Okay, thank you, thank you all. All right, we're onto item 10.1A. This is the Conditional Use Permit Amendment and Determination of Public Convenience or Necessity for Certain Real Property Located at 2701 McKee Road. There's no staff presentation, but we, I believe, do have staff here able to answer questions if the council has any. Why don't we start with public comment?
I have no cards.
Okay. Coming back to the council, Councilmember Ortiz, this is in your district, I'll give you the first opportunity.
Sure. So-- Thank you, Mayor. I actually am very familiar with this location. It's down the street from my house, but I do not have any reservations. I support it, and it's perfectly fine.
Great, do you want to make the motion?
Oh, yeah, that's true. I motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Okay, second by Councilmember Dwan, thank you. Not seeing any other hands. Tony, let's vote. Great, thank you, Tony. We're onto item 3.4, Retirement Boards of Administrations' Adoption of City Policies and Recommended Policies for City Adoption for Officer Retirement Service Operations. Still presentation, we do have Roberto Peña, the Director of Retirement Services, who will be in the box to answer questions. Going to turn to my colleague, councilmember Davis, first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Roberto, and I want to thank both the chairs and all the work that the retirement boards have done in reviewing all of the city policies. I do, I do want to say, I guess I have a question, Roberto. To what extent did you work directly with the administration on evaluating these policies?
So, we didn't, didn't work directly with administration on the policies per se. Exhibit A actually addresses those that were adopted, and Exhibit B, those where we felt there was a gap. But to answer your question, for example, after the memo was issued, we did receive some comments from the finance director, which we obviously appreciate and definitely will sit down with the finance director to go over his recommending comments regarding financial and cash handling. I think we both want the same thing, which is we want to make sure that we actually are performing efficient operations, so we appreciate his comments. And then regarding, obviously regarding the personnel, you, council, actually did make an amendment to one of those, to that particular item, and adding the CEO as part of the process. And lastly, obviously, we held on procurement for a couple of issues, but the most important one is that the boards did receive the recommended changes by the city attorney's office, and so we are going through the review right now and intend to respond to the recommended changes within the 60-day allowed by the, by the city charter, which is, I believe, May 2nd, I'm sorry, May 6th for police and fire, and May 20th for federated.
Okay, thank you. I, I know we don't have any ability to direct you specifically, but I would really like to express a desire for the Office of Retirement Services, which employs city employees, to work more directly and collaboratively with the administration on all these policies instead of going off and doing your own work. And as you did, I told the federated board this, and I would like my colleagues to know, when they hired a consultant to review all of the policies, I thought that was unnecessary and an unnecessary expense to the plan, and I spoke against it. They went ahead and did it anyway. I'm not sure if councilmember Foley spoke the same concerns with, with police and fire, but you have a wealth of expertise in many, many departments here at your disposal, and everyone who works for you and everyone who works directly under Jennifer, the city manager, are all city employees, and I feel very strongly that we need better coordination and collaboration among these two groups. I think it would also behoove ORS and the administration to work together, and we do have the ability to direct the city manager, and so I will include that in my motion to work, work with ORS to determine a method for, for addressing disagreements on controls, especially when we're talking about procurement, finance, and discipline, when ORS proposes deviations to city policies. I really think, again, it's important for city employees, regardless of the department that they're working for, to be treated equally, equitably, and with the same due process, and I think that we need further coordination to do that. So, that's the first part of my motion, is for the city manager to work with ORS to enhance coordination and address disagreements together on controls when there are deviations to city policies proposed by ORS or their boards. And then the second part is just to accept the report, because I don't think, given my understanding of Measure G and the city charter, I don't think we can accept approved policies. I think the boards have already, have already done that, again, somewhat against my advice. And, and I just, I don't think there was enough coordination with the city for me to even know if they're, if they're equal, equivalent city policies. So, that's my motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. I appreciate the motion and fully support it. I'd like to just ensure you gave a list of examples, including procurement, finance, I assume travel policy would be a valid example as well. Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I gave some examples, but that was not a, that was including, but not limited to--
Perfect. That's, that's really helpful, and I appreciate you clarifying that it's really not our role to approve the policies. We can certainly receive and accept a report, but not approve the policies of the office here. One question I have for you, Roberto, that I would, I would like to just kind of hear your, your reaction to is, when there is a discrepancy, actually, let me preface this, given that the city is the backstop for the plans and is taking on the risk of any, any liability that may be incurred, and I'm not just talking about the assets, we're not talking about investment policy here, we're talking about things like cybersecurity and misuse of, you know, just, just the operation of the office. Were there to be any liability, the city would be on the hook ultimately, legally, financially. Given that, when there's a discrepancy between a administrative process within the office or an operational process and what the city's administrative processes are for every other office and department in the city, including all of our appointees, how do you think we should resolve those?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a very good question. Let me answer that by really addressing the comments by trustee, councilmember Davis. I couldn't agree with you more. We certainly have to do a better job coordinating with the city. I think, over time, we both, our office and in some instances the city, there could have been better coordination. So, we look forward to working with the city manager and the city staff, coordinating a lot of these procedures going forward. And as I mentioned, I did receive some comments from the director of finance, which we look forward to discussing with him. So, we stand ready to really work with the city and the city manager and the various departments on making sure that there is a dialogue, dialogue going forward to make sure that we can work together on these issues. That does not mean that in all instances, there will be 100% agreement, but I think we both want the same thing, which is to make sure that we run efficient operations and we limit the liabilities, not only from the city standpoint, Mayor, but also from the plans and boards standpoint.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's critically important for us to figure out, and I appreciate the review that's been done. The memo certainly indicated quite a bit of work. I would like to see greater collaboration between the Office of Retirement Services, which sits within the city, and the city manager, city attorney, city auditor, and, and really, we should be one team where the expertise of our various other departments, IT, finance, et cetera, and the best practices that they've developed for all of our offices, again, across any of our appointees, including all the departments under the city manager, be the best practices adopted across the city, across all offices, because we owe it to our residents and to the retirees to ensure that we minimize any potential risk. And I think tighter coordination and alignment, and I think an open question here still is going to be how we resolve any discrepancies or disagreement over processes. Again, we're not talking about investment strategy here. We understand that's the role of the board. We're talking about the basic administrative operations, the processes and procedures of this office. And so, I just, I can't stress enough how important it is, I, to me, but I think it's largely reflective of the council and the interest of the community that we get aligned and that we have, have greater collaboration and alignment in those operating procedures. See, my colleague, Councilwoman Foley, has put her hand up, so I'll turn to her now.
Great, thank you, and thank you for submitting all of the policy adoptions that you're making within your board, and I appreciate being the liaison to the police and fire board and being able to attend those meetings and listen to the deliberation. But I just want to say, we are not on opposite sides here. We're really on the same side, and the same side is looking out for the best interest of our retirees and our current employees who are future retirees and looking to protect and preserve their benefits. We, on the city side, are not responsible for the investments, we're not involved in that, but the operation side is the area that concerns me the most and that has some risk in, and liability both to the city and to the ultimate plan. The trustees have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the assets, but I view our role as city council members also to be fiduciaries of not just, we're not the trustees, but overarching, in an overarching way, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to the assets and to our residents and to our employees. So, I think it's just really important for us and my colleagues to remember that we are all on the same side in this issue, and, and the idea of collaborating is really important. If we can get to that place, I think that's really powerful and will be effective instead of appearing as if we're not working together. We really do need to work together. So, I would ask for a friendly amendment, councilmember Davis, and that is that the report come back to, the city manager bring a report back to council.
Thank you, happy to accept.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. And the second, I forget now, was it, was it councilmember Foley? Okay, great, so I'm glad to know. Yeah, that works, unless you want to reject your own amendment. Okay. I don't see any other hands. Roberto, thank you for being here and for the report. We appreciate the status update. Tony, I think we're ready to vote on the motion by councilmember Davis.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. We're onto item 3.5, Audit of Retirement Services Procurement Process. We do have a staff presentation. All right, welcome, Joe and Audit Team, whenever you're ready, please begin.
So, good afternoon, I'm Joe Royce, City Auditor. I'm here with Allison Pauly, Michael McConnell, and Maria Vae, from my office to present our audit report, Retirement Services. The office has not consistently followed city procurement policies and standard practice. Of course, Roberto Peña is here as well, from the Office of Retirement Services. Start, just beginning with a little background. City of San Jose offers two defined benefit retirement plans to city employees, the police and fire retirement plan for qualifying members of the police and fire sworn services, and the federated city employees retirement system for qualifying employees not covered by the police and the fire plan. The plans are overseen by two independent boards who have fiduciary responsibility for investments of bunnies and administration of the plans. The city is the plan sponsor for the two plans. Both the city and its employees make ongoing contributions to the plans for future benefits. The Office of Retirement Services, or ORS, administers the retirement benefits provided to the city's employees and retirees, and despite, as we discussed earlier, being overseen by the boards, Retirement Services is a city department staffed by city employees. Similar to other city departments, ORS relies on support services from other city departments, such as the finance department, the human resources department, information technology department, and others. The city has taken steps to guide departments through procurement and contracting. For example, the city sets municipal code requirements and maintains policies, procedures, and guidelines around procurements, and department staff have developed standard contract templates and coordinate reviews between teams such as the finance purchasing division-- Division, Information Technology Department, and others as necessary. On August 9th, 2023, based on a memo from the mayor and Councilmembers Davis and Foley, the council directed my office to conduct an audit of the Office of Retirement Services, and the audit direction had four parts. They're noted in the slide. I'm not going to go through each piece. In October, we issued an interim report that responded to parts one, two, and four of the audit direction around identifying internal process controls for various administrative functions, including information systems security, and a comparison of the governance structures with other public pension plans in California. The interim report found that alignment of ORS and city policies would strengthen internal controls over ORS operations. And though ORS staff are city employees, there was not clear agreement between the city and ORS on whether ORS staff should follow all administrative policies and procedures. We noted that not having clear direction or up-to-date procedures was an internal control weakness that could lead to practical difficulties in routine operations and could expose the retirement systems to unnecessary risk. We had one recommendation, which was that ORS and the retirement boards should work with the city to either adopt city policy and procedures relating to information technology, procurement, and other minister functions, or develop a set of internal policy and procedures at alignment with the cities in those areas. At the time the report was accepted, there was additional direction from city council. Part of that direction was just addressed in the prior agenda items, so I'm not going to go into that. The purpose of issuing the interim report, I want to go back to that, was to expite some elements of the work that could help inform actions the boards were beginning to undertake. And we said at the time that we would conduct more detailed compliance testing outlined in part three of the direction, which was compliance for city policies for financial activities. And this report details that work as it relates to procurement practices in ORS. So we had one finding in that updating internal procedures and staff training can ensure greater compliance with city procurement rules. We found that while in many cases ORS processes have aligned with the city's standard practices, such as using the city's e-procurement software to conduct RFPs, working with the Finance Department to establish purchase orders, this has not always been consistently done, and we noted exceptions. For example, ORS has not always used competitive processes to procure services or followed standard guidelines for procuring unique services. The graphic on the slide shows what this looked like for one consultant. For that consultant, competitive RFQs were conducted in 2009 and again in 2011 for contracts which ran through the beginning of 2015. In 2016, ORS once again contracted with that consultant for new services, but without undertaking a competitive process. Since that time, there have been multiple new contracts or amendments without having a competitive process, and the contract awards since 2016 have totaled $730,000. ORS also does not have approved purchase orders or contracts for all service providers. As a result, they have sometimes relied on non-standard payment practices. In our limited review, we found five service providers that were paid via wire transfer from the plan's custodian bank rather than through Finance's accounts payable division. Though our ORS has some controls to limit the risk of those payments, paying invoices, invoices via the Finance Department would be preferable. We also found that ORS could reduce contracting risks by limited, by limiting retroactive contracting, using city standard contract templates more consistently, and coordinating more with other city departments. In the past, direction to ORS staff to follow city policies has been unclear, and we found that this resulted in confusion for both ORS and other city staff about how ORS contracting and procurements should be handled. And lastly, training ORS staff on city internal procedures, including how to coordinate with other city departments, can further reduce the confusion around procurements and contracting. To do improve controls around procurement and contract, and we recommend ORS develop procedures for key areas, including following the municipal's competitive bidding rules and establishing contracts or purchase orders, among others, and provide training to ORS staff on internal and city procurement contracting procedures. With that, we'd like to thank the Office of Retirement Services and the various city departments that helped during the audit process. The report is available on our website. And with that, I ask you to accept the report, and we are happy to answer your questions. But first, I'll turn it over to Roberto Peña for Retirement Services' response. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I just want to, on behalf of the retirement office and the boards, wanted to thank your staff for conducting the audit. And I think in, obviously, we stand ready to answer any questions. But in summary, I'd like to share a couple of things. The first one is that, obviously, there were findings in the audit, even though obviously do, the office do follow a lot of the policies and procedures at the city level, but certainly there are some changes that need to take place. And we have already initiated a lot of those changes by bringing some contracts back to the boards and including city suggested templates. Plus, of course, going forward, we will work with the city on some policies and procedures, as I stated, from the Finance Department. And lastly, obviously, training to our staff. Staff has already started signing off and sort of the training at the Finance Department. So look forward to working through these findings. And again, we thank you for, for the work.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Roberto. Let's go to public comment first.
There are no cards.
Okay. Go back to the council. Councilwoman Foley?
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for the audit presentation and for the briefing that we had, I guess, last week or whenever it was. Just like to say that the combined Office of Retirement Services manages over $8 billion in assets from both the Federated and Police and Fire Retirement Plans. Our employees and retirees depend on the careful and responsible stewardship of these assets to deliver them their promised benefits at retirement. Not only that, but our residents depend on the health of these retirement plans because the unfunded pension liability directly impacts our ability to deliver, to deliver services to our residents through the general fund. Right now, the combined unfunded actuarial liability for both plans are over $3 billion, which needs to be covered by our general fund and additional contributions from our employees. This is precisely why it's critical that the ORS has robust internal controls, policies, and procedures that protect these assets. The city, employees, retirees, and residents are all exposed to considerable risk when best practices around internal control and cybersecurity are not followed. I'm very concerned with some of the findings in this audit, particularly the ones regarding the wire transfers with no approved purchase order and backdating of contracts. A lack of proper controls puts all the plan members at risk, our city employees at risk, and the city itself at significant risk. At the end of the day, following city policy and proper internal controls should not be an option. All city employees must follow city policy. That should be the number one guiding principle. I just have a couple of questions. Roberto, you responded that you agree with all of the recommendations, but that it's important to, that you needed a compliance officer in order to, order to complete that. Is that correct? And I, did I understand that that has been denied? Or where is the status of the compliance officer?
Thank you, Councilmember. So we, as part of the response, and as part of our budget for the coming fiscal year, we did request a compliance analyst to really have one specific resource dealing with the procurement and the policies and procedures and, you know, having to deal with the findings by the city auditor. But that particular request was denied. That does not mean that we are not going to be working on these improvements or these changes, but it would require, since the, the resource was denied, it would require us to use a different approach. We haven't decided yet how that's going to take place, but we're going to have to work through it without having that particular position in the budget.
And Councilmember, I, I can answer that because that request came to me.
Sure, thank you, please.
My office. And, and we chose not to include it in my budget message because we don't feel that it actually matches the city auditor's findings. The, the audit recommendations emphasize staff training on knowledge of and consistent following of controls and processes. There were not explicit capacity issues identified in the report or in ORS's internal auditor's findings that were previously shared. So it is not currently recommended in the budget. ORS has 27 accountant, analyst, staff specialist, and related management classified FTEs, which is amongst the highest of any departments, just from a ratio standpoint in the city. So my current belief is that this work, this compliance with policy needs to be carried out by the existing personnel, and that it is not adding one more person that's going to solve the compliance issue.
Thank you for that background. I, I appreciate that. This did come up in the Police and Fire Retirement Board, I think just last week or two weeks ago. And there was concern over the denial of the position, but your background, Mayor, really is helpful. It, so, and in conversations with you, Joe, you weren't convinced that it was a staffing issue either, that it was more of an education and training procedure or training opportunity. Is, is that your take on it?
So thanks for the question. We, we did not look at the capacity question. Again, our, our, looking at the, the scope of work that, look at the scope, the, the scope of our work, looking at the various contracts, we did note that there, there was compliance, especially within different work groups within ORS. For example, the accounting division had seemed to have a good, strong understanding of how the RFP process works and how the basic functions work. There were other gaps, and so that's why we were focused on, as the mayor said, on the training, getting, getting everybody on the same page, having those procedures. We didn't, we didn't weigh in on the capacity question. We didn't, we didn't think it was a capacity question. But at the same time, we didn't really do it like a deep dive into, you know, the workload analysis of each of the 27 staff specialists and analysts and what have you.
Okay, that, that's helpful. So, so Roberto, without the staffing position, you believe that you can still accomplish the things that, that were called out in the audit by utilizing staff who already seem to, some staff who seem to understand the procedures or not understand, implement the city's procedures and through training and education. Is that a fair assessment?
To some extent, I, we, obviously, we still need to work through the process and make sure that we implement changes that would be necessary. We still believe that the resource for the compliance would have been very helpful. Certainly, I understand where the mayor's office is coming from. We still believe, obviously, not all the departments have the same operations. And so we, although respectfully understand where they're coming from, we have a difference of opinion on that matter. As, as I said, no, all the operations are the same. And for example, our office issue two financial reports a year. Not many offices have to issue financial reports every year, among other issues. But having said that, obviously, we need to work through it. And I totally agree that training is going to be helpful. So we will work through the process, and if we find any challenges, we'll, we can always, obviously, come to the board and obviously come back to the, to the council if we have any issues. But we will do our best to make sure that we work through the implementation.
Okay, great. I, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. And I had one other question about the, the recommendations and your acceptance of them. There's no timeline. When do you feel that these items can be completed? What's the timeline?
So I'm not ready to address that issue. Certainly, we want to do it through the fiscal year. I think we had a six-month timeline initially thought of through December of 2024, when we asked for the resource. But now that, we will have to rethink how we're going to take the approach. We haven't really determined when that would be. We're hoping that sometime throughout the fiscal year, we can accommodate that. But there's a couple of things that we have to do, obviously. First, we have to make sure that we work on the findings and fix whatever the findings were, were encountered. But then, we also have to make sure that going forward, we don't fall into that kind of eventuality again. So we have to make sure that once they implemented, that things are running smoothly. So it's a long way of saying, I don't have a specific date, but we'll have, we'll try to be as, as effective as we can be through the process.
Oh, Joe?
I just wanted to add, so last Thursday, we presented this audit report to the, the two boards' joint audit committee, and they expressed a similar question, desire to hear about targets, timelines, who's going to be doing what. So this is something that the boards, or at least the, the members on the joint audit committee have expressed interest in some of that same, same sort of information.
Okay, wonderful. That, that's good to know. Then we'll hear from Councilmember Davis, and I will hear the board meetings. Wonderful. Okay, with that, I will move acceptance of the audit.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilwoman Foley, just to pick up on your question about capacity to implement the recommendations, I, I thought it might be useful for the council to hear from our city manager about this question of administrative capacity.
Yes, thank you. So I just want, Roberto, in the spirit of one team, more than happy to collaborate with you from the administration, help you with that training, help you with any controls, and include your staff in more broader city training that we do on all of these issues. And so then your management can feel more confident that all the policies are being followed by the employees. But we can certainly collaborate on that as we work on these policies. So that could help make maybe the transition to working on that easier for you. More than happy to do that.
Thank you, much appreciated. Thank you very much, Jennifer.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. There's certainly a lot of capacity in various city departments that, that we can leverage. Let me go to Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you. I, I share all of Councilmember Foley's concerns about the findings in this audit report. And I, I just want to say, Roberto, I think it's really important, again, because you're a city department, all the city departments put estimated timelines on their response to, to Joe's audit. And I'd, I'd appreciate timelines going forward. And I'm glad to hear that the joint audit committee also wanted targets on, on that. I do think, in a, in a time when we are, we have always had a structural budget deficit, and we have also another budget deficit on top of, on top of that this year, to the tune of combined $50 million, I, I understand it would be easier to have another person. And I think Parks would say it's easier, it would be easier to have another person. And, you know, every other department would say that. So I appreciate you being willing to, to do, make do with who you have. And I would really encourage you to take Jennifer up on her offer and work closely with whatever departments you have the closest parallels with. I think finance is probably the most natural partner, to ensure that, again, your city employees are being trained similarly to city employees from other departments so that the, the controls can be put in place. And as Councilmember Foley stated, really reduce the risk to our employees, our retirees, and our taxpayers. I think that's, that's really important. So I, I'm glad that you've expressed some, some willingness to work. And I'd really encourage you to work with the joint audit committee to put some timelines in place for this, and would appreciate an info memo back to the council as part of that when, when you've got those timelines. Is that something that's, that's possible?
Yes, it is, Councilmember Davis.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Davis. I appreciate that addition. And Councilwoman Foley, thank you for your comments as well. I fully agree. We have a motion. I'm not seeing any other hands from the council. I think we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Okay, we're on to item 4.1 Independent Police Auditor 2023 Year-End Report. We'll let our acting IPA come down to the box, along with interim Chief Joseph and the team. All right, Karen, our, our interim independent police auditor, welcome. And please feel free to jump in when you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the city manager and...
Mr. Mayor, I'm Ms. City Manager and Ms. City Attorney and Honorable Counsel. Thank you very much for taking our report today and for your continued support of this small but very important office for our police agency and the community at large. I would like to thank my IPA staff that has just been remarkable the last nine months that I've worked with them. Vivian Doe, Jessica Flores, Catherine McBane, Frank Meyer Nunes, and Tanya Robertson. Just a quick refresher, the IPA mission, as it is set out in the city charter, really gives us three important duties. One is to audit the complaints about San Jose police officers. One is to make policy recommendations based on trends we see during the year. And finally, to do community outreach. And so this brief report today will cover those three mandated duties. By way of background, I just want to remind the public in particular that IA works with the IPA, the IPA works with IA to ensure police accountability, that all the investigations of police officers are fair, thorough, and objective. But the officers in our community are held accountable not just by IA. They are held accountable by the San Jose Office of Employee Relations. The Police Department has an executive force review committee. The California Commission on Peace Officer Standing and Standards and Training referred to as post, they can actually decertify an officer. Of course, some citizens take their complaints directly to the federal courts in the name of civil rights lawsuits. And the criminal courts also hold officers responsible. The State of California Department of Justice comes in if a police officer shoots an unarmed civilian. And the Office of the District Attorney locally investigates officer shootings and other criminal conduct. So although we play a major role in looking at the behavior and complaints regarding officers, San Jose officers are under a lot of pressure and under the microscope by a lot of different agencies. 2003 was certainly a year of change for this office. The new hiring process began for the permanent IPA, and I commend you all on finding a perfect fit for this community. And I think that Eddie Aubrey will really be a credit to our city. We hired a new analyst, Frank Meyer Nunes, and he is a tremendous addition to the Office of the IPA. He was hired because of the mandate of Measure G, and he is going to take a very close look at our use of force cases, and we will issue a report separate from that which the City of San Jose issues. And he will continue that work as well as augmenting our auditing. I'm very pleased to announce that we have the first-ever procedural agreement between San Jose Police Department and the Office of IPA. And really, I have to give a shout out to Lieutenant Max Zuniga and Sergeant Fagoni of IA. They really did the heavy lifting on this project, and they gave us a lot of time and buy-in. So now, for the first time, we're all in agreement as to what the timelines are as we go back and forth during the investigation of a complaint against an officer that has to be completed in 365 days. So thank you, San Jose PD. I believe we strengthened the auditing model. I was really pleased when I met Eddie Aubrey today for the first time, and he said one of the reasons he wanted to come to San Jose is that he believes strongly in the auditing model that we have here. And we really strengthened it because, for the first time, I don't believe we've missed an interview, and I don't believe we've missed an audit. And I'm very proud of that. We were doing some catch-up, but at the same time, this staff that I described to you really got the job done. We also cleared a backlog that we had nine months ago of approximately 100 cases that weren't put into our audit tracker, so that we could bring you statistics. And a special shout out to Tanya Robertson, who really saw this as something we really had to take care of immediately. And finally, we reached out, I think for the first time, to the Defense Bar in San Jose, and they are going to be reporting to us, as they have, any violations of Fourth Amendment rights they become aware of. So I think it's important for the IPA office to have a close relationship with the Defense So when we get a complaint, or IA gets a complaint, we put it in a shared database, and some things can be taken care of immediately. In other words, sometimes there's simply no misconduct. The, a citizen doesn't understand what officers are allowed to do, and they make a complaint, and it's simply they're not describing any misconduct. Or sometimes there's a complaint such as a policy complaint, and that would be like, I heard a helicopter last night and really interrupted my TV viewing. Well, that would go to our research and development because it's a policy complaint. Sometimes we get complaints about what the sheriff's office has done, so neither agency can take care of that. And sometimes complaints are very old, and usually if they're more than a year old, unless they involve something very serious like force, they are closed as being stale. Some complaints, you cannot tell, and even with follow-up, what the citizen is complaining about, and that usually involves a complaint coming from someone who may suffer some confusion due to mental illness. And so there's just no way to investigate the complaint because it's nonsensical. And occasionally, a complaint is withdrawn. And I'll have to give, when a complaint is withdrawn, it's actually taped, and we review that withdrawal of a complaint to make sure that it was a legitimate withdrawal. So I think that process is excellent. Before I give you the statistics, I will explain that IA reaches conclusions on those complaints that they do take, the conduct complaints, and based on, of course, documents, police reports, the printouts from the dispatchers, interviews, and citizen witnesses and GPSs. So all those things are taken into consideration. And there's various findings. One would be that the complaint is sustained. In other words, this happened by a preponderance of the evidence, they believe it happened. Not sustained, it's really not supported by that preponderance standard, and that was much more common before police and citizens had the good friend of body-worn camera footage, because that's amazing. I mean, one of the things that surprised me about this job is you'll get a complaint, and a citizen will describe something, and you look at the body-worn footage and go, could this be the right? I mean, it just isn't there. So it's certainly the friend of the police, but it's also the friend of the citizens because things, again, that you just can't believe happened, there it is on footage. Some things simply are unfounded, it's absolutely untrue, that would be a finding. No finding you'll see in our stats. Oftentimes, that's an officer who has decided to leave the department or has been asked to leave the department, and so there's simply no finding on that case. Exonerated means that there was some justification for the action, and sometimes there's a finding of exonerated with training. In other words, the procedure was justified, but maybe the officer would benefit for a little more training. And finally, supervisor referral, that just means that the officer is going to get a talking to by his supervisor, and again, it will improve that officer's performance. And one other thing before I give you the statistics, I'd like you to have a little bit of perspective on what your department has done. In 2023, there were only two officer-involved shootings. One of those, no one was hurt, and in the other one, the civilian who was shot was armed with a replica weapon, a pistol and a machete, and it was justified and reviewed by the appropriate agencies. San Jose PD had active 912 officers. They were only had 77% of their officers really active. Officers can be off-duty for all sorts of reasons, but they were only 77% fully staffed. They had over 200,000 service calls and over 87,000 self-initiated stops. In other words, when I get my ticket for speeding, that was a self-initiated stop. And out of all that activity with all those officers, there were approximately 224 conduct complaints. So I think overall, as an auditor, I would say you should be pretty darn proud of San Jose PD. Now, I have statistics for you on disposition of allegations, and I think of most interest is that 26% of the allegations were sustained, and another 5% went to supervisor review. So that means over 31% of the allegations were actually dealt with face-on, and an officer had to improve his conduct or face, his or her conduct, and face discipline and an improvement We also looked at the sustained rate and compared it from 2018 to 2013. And I note for your viewing that the sustained rate is the highest ever. It's about 24%. And that tells me, I mean, the department will speak to it, but it shows a great desire to have a professional organization that will be held accountable. So that sustained rate has come up, and it indicates to me that Chief Mata and Chief Joseph care very much about professionalism, and we welcome that statistic. And finally, the force complaints are down in this city. And I know that 2020 was a sad year for San Jose and for the department, and there's been a decrease every year since that unfortunate year for San Jose. Now I'll get on to our policy recommendations for the City of San Jose. I believe that officers now are self-reporting force, and in the same way, there should be a mechanism for them to self-report any Fourth Amendment violation that they become aware of. In other words, if a case goes to court and the defense brings a motion to dismiss on unreasonable search and seizure, and the case is dismissed, that officer's going to need some more training, and that officer should self-report, because otherwise it becomes difficult for the department to know about a case being dismissed for a motion, for a violation of someone's Fourth Amendment rights. And again, I mentioned before, I've made contact with the Defense Bar locally and asked them to report any Fourth Amendment violations. I believe that resourcing management can be improved. There are sections within the duty manual that call for supervisors on, at a scene, to clear that scene as soon as practicable. And I think we've all seen scenes where there, we go, what are those officers doing standing around? And sometimes we don't know what they're doing, but sometimes they are standing around. And I think that's the supervisor's duty, is to clear the scene as soon as possible and give everyone an assignment, and those who don't have an assignment to go on to other duties. I made a recommendation that the department put an emphasis on training and force, training regarding the obligation to report force. There was some confusion in interviews we had with younger officers, and before I could bat an eye, IA sent out in their newsletter a review for the entire department on this issue. But I think this should stay at the forefront, because one of the things the public cares most about is whether or not the force used against civilians is reasonable or not. And on that note about the newsletter that IA sends out, they have been very involved in training our office. Anytime we ask to be part of a training, they set a training up for the auditors, so we can learn more about the FDO program, about use of force, and what is acceptable and what isn't. So again, I want to thank the department for that. The fourth policy recommendation I made is that the duty manual should include the IA, IPA procedural guidelines that we agreed on. As I told you last time we met, I believe that IA, Internal Affairs, is very prompt in meeting the different deadlines we have to do these investigations. Where we get bogged down and lose time is when the case goes from IA, which has worked in a timely fashion, up the chain of command to some captains and lieutenants who sit on these cases. And when they do that, it takes away my ability to appeal to the chief or the city manager. So it's our recommendation that the duty manual should contain the IA and IPA guidelines, because then there would be no question for those in the chain of command holding it up that they, in fact, are breaking a rule within the department. And finally, we had a few odd cases this year that we found shocking, and it was officers who used what's called shock talk. And I think you'll see in the report, in two instances, officers asked inappropriate questions and explained that they did that because they were trained to shock civilians, and then they'll be more likely to tell the truth. Well, that's silly, there's nothing to support that, and so we want shock talk quashed and And finally, the third prong of our mission is community engagement. Last year in 2023, there were only 1,300 contacts, and those are true contacts, one-on-one, that's not audiences, but that's actually people that you talk to and answered questions from. And I felt that the IPA office fell down on that, and it was because we were doing some catch-up at the office. I will tell you that Catherine McBane, who was brought on because of her talents for outreach, has just made remarkable strides now. And in the first quarter of this year, she's already made 810 contacts. So she's out in the community all the time, and this is an important part of IPA's work. And again, I was very happy to hear that Eddie Aubrey also shares that commitment to community outreach. So with that, I want to thank you, and thank you for the opportunity you gave me personally, and congratulate you on having a great IPA office and department.
Thank you, Karen. I have a couple comments, and then we'll go to public comment, but does the department respond, or is that only? I don't recall, I'm sorry, I forget from this report from last year. Chief Joseph, did you want to offer any response on this?
We did issue a response memo, but we're here for any questions related to anything that IPA presented.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure you didn't have any additional presentation. So Karen, thank you for the very comprehensive report. I just, I feel compelled again to thank you for stepping in at a time of uncertainty and instability. and instability last year, and I, I think your level of organization and professionalism, the collaborative approach you've taken with Internal Affairs and the entire department, and the clarity of purpose and mission that you've brought to the work has been a really good thing for our city. And I'm grateful to you and your team. I recognize there are a number of people in the office, I had the opportunity to come visit again today, who have done very hard work, sometimes in, in moments of, of uncertainty about what was changing in their, in their office and what it meant for their jobs, but really stayed focused on the mission of the office, cleared out a significant backlog. And as was reflected in your report, this closer working relationship with Internal Affairs and the clarity about the expectations and the process, and having that codified for the first time, I think is extremely powerful. I think it's a great gift to the city and our, to all of our residents, and I think you've established a really strong foundation for Eddie Aubrey as he steps into the role. So once again, I just, I want to thank you, not just for the report, but everything you've done over the last nine months. I think Eddie's lucky you, you didn't want the, the permanent job, but, just kidding. But really, Karen, we, we're very grateful to you. Tony, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Sean?
Okay.
I admit, I didn't read the report. I listened. I just want to know if it's broken down by complaints, by unhoused people and things like that. There's still a lot of reports from unhoused folks of being hassled by police, given errant information, just things to make you scared and make you run away and pack and things like that, sort of the shock talk kind of thing. So I just wanted to know. At least in my experience, not a lot of people engage with IPA anymore. They just feel like they did it a couple times, nothing came of it. That includes me. So I don't know how to increase people's faith. My personal, when I got involved with IPA, I was outside your building. I was an occupier, and LaDoris came by and gave all of us the wristbands for the IPA, and that's how we got involved. And I still have that wristband. It broke, but I held on to it because it came from her. So it's kind of special, you know? But that's how we got involved, and it meant a lot. And, but every time we filed, like, nothing came of it. It seemed like, no matter what we did, you'd get a letter from Eddie going, blah, 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 dismissed. So that's just been my experience in many of us. But I also just wanted to say that you sort of referenced 2020. And as one of those 2020 people, it is very hard to have to come to this building all the time, every, because you have PTSD from getting shot by the cops. So I just got to say, thanks for always making me come to the building and see the people who shot me right outside the door where I got shot. It's not cool, super not cool. Neither is that so sad face. But it's, it's harsh. It is, if I never had to come to San Jose again, I would be really, really happy. But I do, because it's people that I work with, and those are the people who need the IPA the most and aren't filing the complaints because they're burned out.
Thank you, Said.
We've been in contact. Nice meeting you, everybody. Public safety is everybody's job, we know. Mindfulness and communication are bringing. And on my part with FBI, I would love to learn more about mindfulness from them. I understand it takes five years to train. I'd love to learn more. Mindfulness and communication, public safety, the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Serinder.
I wanted to talk on this report thing because I'm still living a nightmare. In February of 2019, your police department allowed my ex-husband to file a false missing persons report. This was part of his plan, which he communicated with my sisters, who advised him not to do it. A few hours later, he used that report to have me picked up, lied to the police and said I'm suicidal, put me in a 5150 for three days where my phone was taken away. Then, when I was about to get out, he forged my name and tried to have me held there for longer and have intensive treatment. I got out. He then yelled at the psychiatrist for letting me get out. Then he used that report to take my son from me and put me into depression, not being able to see my son. And five years later, I'm still dealing with this because people think I'm mentally ill and that I'm suicidal, and I'm not. And when I tried to file a police report, a police officer in the police station told me it's not a crime to file a false police report. These are a lot of wasted resources, and five years later, no one's going to do anything about it, but I'm going to keep talking about it until I get my son back. Thank you.
Back to counsel.
Thank you, Tony. Councilwoman Jimenez, we'll start with you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for the report. Appreciate it. I just wanted to ask a question of something that just came to mind as, as I looked at the information as, as Ms. Sunur Towery, as you, as you commented on some of the recommendations. And I appreciate the, just the language, resourcing, resourcing management. We sometimes, I suspect I'm probably not the only one up here, sometimes get questions by residents saying, why are there so many officers at this particular stop? And I've never sort of attributed a, a title to that, but this, I think, captures it. And so what I'm curious about is, and Chief Joseph, feel free to answer as well, have we ever quantified that? Like, how, I mean, it seems like this is the first time I've seen it addressed anywhere. And I'm curious, like, if there's, if there's a way to quantify that, like, how many, for example, how many calls didn't get an officer to those calls because folks were, you know, standing around at a scene, doing what they're supposed to be doing in most circumstances, I'm sure. Is there any, any answer to that? Any, any sense as to? Yeah. Yeah, Chief Joseph, if you have any thoughts? Just spitballing here, I'm trying to better understand it.
I, I don't have a, a way to quantify that, really. I, I think the concern is, you know, again, often people will see a number of officers in a particular location, and if they don't seem to be doing anything active right at that moment, it appears to be that they're, that they're not doing anything and that they shouldn't be there. And obviously, we want to be efficient, and as the IPA pointed out, if somebody is remaining at the scene of any kind of event and no longer has a responsibility, then it's the supervisor's job to clear them and get them on to the next task. We recognize that we're a thinly-staffed department, and so we have to operate as efficiently as we can.
Yeah. Has, because this is the first time I've ever seen it. Has it ever been sort of put into this context or given a, given a, a title, if you will, Chief Joseph or, or, or IPA? I'm not.
You know, I would say that we get a handful of these types of complaints from time to time. It's not an overwhelming number. We've never really given it a title. I appreciate the IPA. I mean, I think our title's very apt.
Yeah.
And, but, but it's not something that's frequently complained about.
Right. Ms. Sunur Towery, I don't know if you had any comments or thoughts about? I have another question, but. I'm sorry? Your mic's not on.
Karen, your mic isn't on. Thank you.
No, I, that was just my description of the problem.
Yeah. I think it captures it quite well. I thought, I thought it was, it really, when I read that, I think, okay, I know what she, exactly what she means. Okay, thank you. The other, the other, what I'm curious about, Chief Joseph, is, is there anything in the existing policies that sort of touches on this and the operationalization of how folks are deployed and not when they're at scenes?
Yes, we do have an existing duty manual section that addresses this issue. Obviously, at least according to some of our complainants, we're not adhering to it as completely as we could, so it's something that we want to emphasize to primarily the frontline supervisors, but to everyone. If, if you don't have a responsibility at a scene, you need to clear yourself. If you're a sergeant or lieutenant and you notice that the resources are there and no longer need to remain, then you need to ensure that they get cleared. But there is currently a duty manual section that addresses this.
Okay, all right. And then you all, I don't know if you, we use the language in this, that you're greenlighting it, but you agree with the recommendation, and it seems like there's maybe like one little sentence says, we agree, we're going to do it. Can you share a little bit about sort of what the, the, the mechanics of addressing it? Is it just a matter of like putting out a, I'll call it a bulletin, but putting out some sort of memo, if you will, to, to, to the staff that would be sort of making the call in these type of situations to send folks back out to the field?
Yes, so a common way in which we'll emphasize a, a policy that's already in existence, but we feel perhaps isn't being adhered to as closely as it should, is through a training memo to the entire department, and then that's accompanied by, as the IPA mentioned, Internal Affairs, Lieutenant Zuniga and his staff will visit briefings, remind people of, you know, issues that, that appear to be more complained about or that, that appear to be problematic for us, just to make sure people are aware of existing policies or any changes in policies. So it's, it's just a matter of reemphasizing the, the policies we already have.
Okay.
But we agree, by the way, with all of her recommendations.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The other, the other question I have sort of tied to this is, is I vaguely remember that, and I'm not sure if it's, it's a, it's a policy, but it's, it's essentially, and I'm paraphrasing here, so, but, but, or just trying to recall it from memory, is that when there is a call that I think rightfully so in many circumstances, but there's an overwhelming show of force when you all are encountering bad guys on the street, if you will, to get a lot of officers out there, a lot of bodies out there to show, you know, okay, we have control of the situation. Is there a policy that sort of governs that, or, or is that just, just something that's informally sort of understood that you all?
Well, that, I mean, with all due respect, that sounds like a value judgment about how many officers should handle a certain issue. And, and I would say that I would rather have more officers in a, in a situation in which force could potentially be used than, than less. The, the goal is obviously always to resolve something peacefully, and, you know, it's interesting. I, I've learned recently through someone a lot about the fire service. I didn't really know very much about how fires are fought and how firefighters attack a structure fire. I just thought the truck shows up and they turn on the hose and then the fire is put out. But it's really complicated, and there's each firefighter and each division, and Councilmember Dwan would, I'm sure, be able to attest to this, has a particular role and a particular task and a, and a job that's very specific. And if all those jobs aren't done, then perhaps the fire doesn't get fought or someone gets injured. And our job is much the same. And so if it appears sometimes that, well, I don't understand why there's this many police officers, or I don't understand why they're doing this or what they're doing that, often we have a very good explanation, and perhaps it's on us for not doing a good enough job of messaging why officers do the various things they do. You know, there'll be officers, like, for instance, if we have a situation of like a barricaded subject, we're going to have an outer perimeter to keep people out of the general area, then we're going to have an inner perimeter where the problem is more localized. We're going to have officers with very specific tasks at each, you know, at, at the very heart of the problem, and if, if by dividing up that labor, we're more likely to get the result that we're hoping for, which is a peaceful resolution. Yes, it seems like a lot of officers, but, but they're there with a specific purpose.
Yeah, that all, that all totally makes sense. I wasn't, I wasn't implying that it, it's not a good approach. I just, because I, I've seen it myself, I think we've all probably have, just driving around the city and seeing certain circumstances, but I often don't question it because I assume there's a reason for it. And so, so your explanation makes sense to me. I think it's obviously Joe Schmo driving down the road, citizen that just says, hey, what the heck's going on? I, I know it's, we understand, things are often more, a little bit more complicated than what it seems just on the surface. So thank you for the, for the information, and I'll move acceptance of the report.
Do we have a second? Great, thank you, Councilwoman Batra. Thank you, Councilwoman Jimenez. Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Okay, we'll take that as a reflection of the thoroughness and the, the force of the argument behind the report. Thank you again. I thought it was a, a very educational focus, and I, I thought the recommendations were very on point. So thank you again, Karen. Really appreciate the role you've played. We're grateful to you. All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We are on to item 4.2, which is the San Jose Police Department Internal Affairs Unit 2023 Department Initiated Investigations Report.
Good afternoon, City Manager McGuire, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, community members in attendance, intern of IPA Karen Sunur Towery and her staff. My name is Masolorni Sunuga. I am the current commander of the San Jose Police Department's Internal Affairs Unit. I'm here to present the department's internal affairs, Department Initiated Report for the 2023 calendar year. This is the 16th DII report issued by the department. The report includes administrative investigations of potential misconduct. This report differs from the IPA's report, and that involves both sworn and non-s sworn employees. To begin, I would like to explain the distinction between a conduct complaint and a department-initiated investigation. When a member of the community files a complaint against a department member and it's determined, and it's determined to be potential misconduct, the complaint will be classified as a conduct complaint. The initial investigation must determine whether the facts stated in the complaint are such that, if sustained, would amount to a potential violation of department or city policy. A department-initiated investigation, on the other hand, is an investigation initiated by the office of the chief of police. In matters of public trust, confidence, and transparency, the department cannot solely rely on conduct complaints to address misconducts or performance concerns. The department must also hold its members accountable. Consequently, department-initiated investigations are often based on allegations which come directly from members of the department when there is specific awareness of or a belief that a department member potentially violated department or city policy. Department-initiated investigations may also be brought to the attention of the department by another police or judicial entity. Department-initiated investigations are either investigated by Internal Affairs Unit or by the involved department member's chain of command. Historically, an existing department-initiated investigation would be reclassified as a conduct complaint if the complaint was received by a member of the community. When the case was transitioned to a conduct complaint, the IPA was notified and may have elected to audit the investigation. After 2021, now the IPA is allowed to respond to all of these complaints. With this fundamental understanding of a department-initiated investigation, I would like now to present some of the data points for the 2023 calendar year. In 2023, department-initiated, 40 sworn department-initiated investigations, compared to 62 in 2022. Of these 47 DIIs, 52 sworn employees were named, compared to 130 in 2022. The total number of allegations associated to the 47 investigations was 91 in 2023, compared to 226 in 2022. The department's various efforts of training and educating its members are a potential reason for this improvement and reduced investigations. In 2023, department completed 57 investigations, which contained 209 allegations against 134 officers. Of the 57 investigations, 45 investigations, or 79%, were sustained, and of the 209 allegations in those 57 investigations, 186, or 89%, had a sustained finding. The most common allegation in 2023 for sworn officers was procedure followed by conduct on becoming an officer. This trend is consistent with the previous four years, between 2019 and 2022. The most common form of discipline in 2023 was a 10-hour suspension for sworn department members. This is due to the finalizing of discipline imposed from COVID vaccination mandates. In conclusion, in 2023, officers with one to three years of experience continue to be the primary level of experience identified in department-initiated investigation, followed by officers with 46, 46 years of experience. Procedure remained the most common allegation when investigating alleged misconduct or performance concerns. In department, in a departure from previous years, a 10-hour suspension was the most common form of discipline that was imposed during 23, 2023, due to finalizing of COVID vaccination mandates. Furthermore, the department-initiated investigations continue to be sustained at a higher rate than conduct complaints. Finally, the Internal Affairs Unit has continued to distribute a monthly newsletter, attend briefings, and, and adapted policy to, to conform with current legislation and community expectations in order to improve the department's efforts of building trust and confidence with our community. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to present this report to you and our community. This concludes our presentation.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it. Tony, do we have a public comment?
Serinder.
Surrender.
Okay, continuing from what I spoke about earlier. After that happened, I tried to move on with my life, got a job at Google. Um, and after almost three years, I decided to quit because my son was taken away. And on my mission in the last two years, I have been treated very poorly by the police. Uh, when I go in, sometimes they didn't let me use the restroom, so I had to file a report. And then I had two officers on Quimby Road going about over 70 miles per hour try to hit my car. When the first one almost hit my car, I, uh, swerved a little bit and then I pulled over as I saw the second one coming and I reported it right away. I don't think anything was done. And then additionally, then I got harassed from security at San Jose Guarda. And here I am, five years after that false police report with three restraining orders against me, making it very difficult for me to ever find employment again and still don't have my son. This is absolute corruption. And what this is, was attempted murder in 2019 by my ex-husband and then attempted murder by other people that are within this department. And I want something done about it and I want my son back.
Back to council.
Thank you. Lieutenant Zuniga, appreciate the report. Um, I would like to ask if in the, I think it was helpful and comprehensive, but in the future, if it's possible to have a visual presentation that breaks down some of the data and points the way we, we just saw from the IPA's report. Would that seem possible?
Yes, sir, we can, uh, do that for next year.
Great, thanks. Just even a few slides so we can all make sure we're, we're seeing the same data together. But I appreciate the report. Do my colleagues have any other questions, comments, or a motion? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I, I just had a very brief, um, uh, question on one of your charts. Um, on the table number five, classification of completed allegations received versus sustained. Um, and I was looking at the, the numbers. I'm just wanting to verify I'm reading this correctly under the procedures. It's, uh, the number of allegations is, for example, uh, in 2023, 172 and those sustained are 155. Is that, is that what I'm reading correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I was just, um, curious in terms of, of, um, the, the trend. As you look at the trend, it's sort of increasing. And so I don't know if it's a matter of, well, there's more reporting or whatever, but I think that I would put a little watch on that one so that, you know, we have a, a better understanding as to, you know, procedures and ensuring. I know there's a lot of training that's been done over the last few years, but, um, as I look across and see trends, that might be something we may want to, uh, put on the watch list. Um, but other than that, I'd like to, uh, move acceptance of the report.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions? Not seen any. Okay, Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you all very much. Okay. We are on to item eight point one, actions related to the mobile interim housing project located at Villa del Oro. We do have a staff presentation.
Good morning, uh, mayor and council, members of the public. My name is Omar Passan, Deputy City Manager for the City of San Jose. I'm joined by half the city here in the box as usual. No, I, I, um, we're here, uh, my focus is on preventing and ending homelessness and managing its, its impacts and, and I'm joined by Jim Ortball, former Deputy City Manager, who along with Sal Kumar and, uh, Talav Fado Lazada, uh, have been leading the production of the emergency interim housing communities for the, the City of San Jose. Also joined by Andrea Flores Shilton, the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services, Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director for the City's Housing Department, and Matt Lesch, uh, Public Works Director. We're here today to press forward urgent work, uh, to provide 150 beds and supportive services to help get people on a path to permanent housing and help them get off the street, uh, for people who are living on San Jose city streets. The city is grateful for the philanthropic partnership. You'll hear more about today with the Sobrato Foundation and Dignity Moves. And now I'd like to turn it over to Reagan Henninger to start our presentation.
Thanks, Omar. Reagan Henninger with the City's Housing Department. We're pleased to be before you today with another new interim housing community at Villa del Oro. The Housing Department, uh, will align this site with our existing interim housing best practices and standards that we developed, um, and council approved back in October after we conducted a study with Homebase. This particular site, as I mentioned, will be in line with our other interim housing sites. It will be low barrier, which means easily accessible to people in need. So, we'll accept pets, there won't be sobriety requirements, uh, there'll be storage, and it is close and accessible to public transportation, for example. Will also involve the expertise of people who have experienced homelessness in the program implementation. Uh, this was another standard we established, uh, for example, establishing a resident council at our interim housing sites. And finally, the program will have robust onsite supportive services with a goal of moving to stable housing. Um, and I did want to mention that this program, uh, will also have a community advisory committee. Um, and right now, the community has decided, uh, that it will also, that it will share the same C A C or Community Advisory Committee with the Santa Teresa Supportive Parking Site. But one thing I did want to talk about this afternoon is we often talk about this work in numbers and units and percentages, um, but not often about the people who we are impacting every day. And so I did want to take a moment to put a human face on our interim housing. This is a photo of Sandra and her case manager at Life Moves. Sandra came to one of our interim housing sites after living at, um, an encampment along Coyote Creek at Corey Court. She was referred to our interim housing from our path outreach teams. She had a, uh, permanent supportive housing voucher. However, she was very weary of just surviving on the streets. Uh, she frequently changed phone numbers. She often lost important paperwork related to housing, such as her identification, her social security card, letters about housing. Keeping track of all of these things was very difficult while she remained on the streets. And so the city's interim housing gave her that opportunity, um, to really feel safe and stabilized and work towards permanent housing. So Sandra moved into a new apartment, um, back in August, and this is a picture of her on the day that she moved in with her Life Moves case manager. And with that, I am passing it to Jim Ortball to do some overview of the project.
Thank you very much, Reagan. Again, Jim Ortball with the City Manager's Office. Let me just start by recapping the location and the site of the project in South San Jose in Council District 10, at the southeast corner of Villa del Oro on San Ignacio Avenue. The total property is about 2.8 acres and the development will cover just over two acres on that site. The owner of the property is the Sobrato Family Foundation. The design really is an efficient use of two acres on the site, providing quality shelter housing for up to 150 people with 68 parking spaces, all the connected utilities and important amenities such as case management space, laundry facilities, food preparation and eating areas, outdoor seating and shade, and an area for pets. There's the site location. You can see that in orange as well, at San Ignacio and Villa del Oro. So, on to the next slide. Uh, the project is only possible due to a large list of partners, philanthropic donors, and community-minded nonprofits, designers, and construction companies. A major partnership to get to where we are today. The project started when John Sobrato reached out to Mayor Mayhem with an idea to use his undeveloped land in South San Jose for a temporary shelter housing project. His foundation is donating the land to the city for $1 per year. Initially, the plan was to donate for five years, but he sinned up that offer to 10 years. Mr. Sobrato also suggested we explore partnering on the project with Dignity Moves, which initiated a phase of concept development and cost benefit analysis that was presented to the council in the fall of 2024. The council gave us direction to do final design and to bring the final project delivery agreement back to council for approval, which is what we're here for today. Dignity Moves brought in an experienced partner team of Gensler Architects and Swinerton Construction. All three of them, Dignity, Gensler, and Swinerton, have reduced their normal fees to help make this project more cost competitive. And in terms of its competitiveness, the cost per bed is about $89,000 per bed, which in today's market conditions is quite good. The philanthropic donations were the largest piece of the reduced cost to the city at $2.85 million with another $1.1 million in fee discounts, not including the donated land. And the city staff report recognizes those philanthropic donors that contributed to the project and we thank them for their generosity to the city, to the community, and to those struggling with finding housing in our community. And I'd also like to acknowledge Elizabeth Funk, Joanne Price, and Mayor Mayhem, who were instrumental in engaging the donors to, uh, to contribute to this project. The project, conceived by a collaborative model of nonprofit developers, designers, and construction and building team, completed a rapid design and the project is ready to build now with people expected to move in this winter. And now I'll turn it over to Andrea, who will talk about the surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you, Jim. Andrea Flores Shilton with Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services. Uh, based on council direction last October to explore a no encampment zone, we're returning with data on neighborhood conditions related to graffiti, illegal dumping, as well as the number of encampment trash services provided in the area. We collected this over two six-month periods. September 2022 to February 2023 is period one, and September of last year to February of this year is period two. We use three distances, the immediate vicinity of a quarter of a mile from Villa del Oro to a half-mile radius and the one and a half-mile marker, um, per direction. And you see a map with, um, those vicinities indicated. In the immediate vicinity around the Villa del Oro site, there is minimal blight conditions. As you move farther out to the main thoroughfares such as Santa Teresa Boulevard, Highway 85 and Highway 101, the Union Pacific-owned train tracks, and the Monterey Road area, there is a big uptick in blighted conditions. Historically, these areas have been prone, prone to blight prior to the existence of the E I H sites. On this slide, we provide information about the location of serviced encampments in the area and also the number of encampment trash services provided during the two time periods. This information does not specify how many people are living in each of these locations, only the services delivered to the approximately nine encampments and several RVs. As indicated, encampment trash services from the bi-weekly trash, excuse me, Cash for Trash Program and the weekly trash routes were steady over both periods with a slight increase in period two based on RVs enrolling in Cash for Trash. In addition to condition analysis, council directed staff to explore what would be involved in establishing a zone around the site within which people would not be allowed to remain. The estimate, the cost estimate at this time for such a zone at a radius of 1.5 miles is between $920,000 and $1.2 million per year. This does not account for the additional impacts outside the zone, assuming that people will move outside the zone and into places that are currently not encamped or had been previously abated locations. And with that, I will turn it back over to Omar.
Thank you, Andrea. And so now you just have the recommendations here. Authorize the city manager or her designee to negotiate and execute a lease agreement and all other necessary documents for 10 years in the amount of, uh, $1 per year with the Sobrato Family Foundation. Determine the city, uh, may award a project delivery agreement to Dignity Moves to deliver this interim housing project at Villa del Oro without a competitive procurement under the Idle Act exception. Authorize the director of Public Works to negotiate, award, and execute a project delivery agreement at a maximum guaranteed amount not to exceed 10.7 million and approve a con, a 10% contingency, uh, for the project. And then just really quickly in terms of next steps, I'll note that there should, should be an ED on the end of establish. As Reagan mentioned earlier, the community has, uh, already worked with the council office to establish a community advisory committee. As Reagan mentioned, uh, spring 2024, we expect commence, uh, construction to commence. And as Jim Ortball noted earlier, uh, the expectation is that this would open in, in the, uh, this winter. So, with that, that concludes our presentation and we're available for questions.
Great, thank you all very much. Uh, just to be very clear about that last slide that's still up, winter 2025, as you said, this coming winter. I, I imagine you're describing January, February, some, I know you don't want to give a specific month, but not the...
That's right, it's not a year.
Not the end of 2025.
That's correct.
Great. I was gonna say, it's supposed to be faster and cheaper, Omar. Um, great, appreciate the, uh, collaboration. I have a bunch of thank yous, uh, but I'll save those for after public comment. Tony?
Jill, followed by Deborah and Sandy Perry.
Thank you so much. Um, do you mind going back to the slide that shows the radiuses? Is that possible?
Um, just note that your timer is now on the podium instead of on the screen, if they're gonna share that.
Okay. Um, so just for clarification, is the request to put a no encampment zone within 1.5 miles or is it two blocks?
Sorry, just to clarify, we will answer that as we deliberate, but public comment is just an opportunity for you to address the entire council with any of your comments.
Okay, so when I came here, I saw that the request was that there's a two-block radius. My concern is that that's not enough to protect the neighborhood. I request that the council really looks at using that 1.5-mile radius to help make sure that this area is really safe and clean and that we are helping people find permanent housing. But I think it would feel much safer to have that 1.5-mile radius, given where I currently am in my neighborhood would be covered by that and it would not be covered by a two-block radius. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. I'd also like to call down Joanne and Sean.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, mayor and council members. My name is Sandy Perry. I'm speaking today for CHAM Deliverance Ministry, which I've been part of for the last 30 years. Uh, we're here today to speak in favor of the project, but to oppose the mayor's memo around clearing encampments and vehicle residents in the Villa del Oro area. We have a question, which is how many people will be impacted by this action? Are there enough spaces in the Villa del Oro and Rue Ferrari expansion to accommodate everyone who's proposed to be removed? And if not, what other housing is available? And if not available, where will you send people? I believe Councilmember Torres will confirm that people in my downtown neighborhood are tired of the city sweeping unhoused people out of other districts and sending, sending them to ours. There's a cardinal rule around encampment sweeps, which is that there should be no sweeps without an alternate place for people to go. And in fact, the mayor was quoted in The Guardian today saying that to do so is the definition of insanity. There's a lot of talk about safe sleeping sites, but nothing that it's been done so far. And there should be no further sweeps and further expansions of no encampment zones uh, until... until these safe sleeping sites are up and running. Finally, we're against any more spending commitments for the 24-25 budget before the budget is adopted and specific programs weigh against other priorities. Oh, I still got more time. Okay, well, I will say this about safe sleeping sites. They should not be internment camps. They should be clean, beautiful, conveniently located, near stores and transportation, with running water, toilets, showers, and resident participation in governance. And if done right, safe sleeping sites can be part of the solution to homelessness if understood that they are a temporary measure toward permanent housing. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Pointed efforts are being made to treat vulnerable people and people with lived experience as insignificant. Discrimination laws and ordinances from the past, such as Jim Crow, ugly laws, anti-Oki laws, sundown, and vagrancy laws, disproportionately affect people of color, with low income, and without homes. Quality-of-life ordinances, such as what is being proposed, are the same as laws of this kind. They are created to force people out of community instead of including them simply because people classify them as subhuman or blight. Banning and forcing a whole class of people by threat of arrest into crowded mass shelters is a violation of civil rights. Without a direct path to stable housing, forced mass sheltering is simply revolving-door warehousing and forced institutionalization. Please instead direct funds and people's power toward quality and innovative efforts to end homelessness. Those already marginalized and suffering deserve to be included with access to basic needs and services that avoid further trauma and marginalization. Please promote health and well-being, privacy, protection from exposure to the elements, and freedom from overcrowding and congregate diseases. Smaller community shelters self-governed by the people who live there is being accomplished in other places and should be explored. Remove bans and barriers and instead provide a fast and direct path to stable and affordable housing. Stop further harm. People with current lived experience can be included to explore solutions for themselves. Please inform people of their rights and talk to them directly.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Joanne Price. I'm co-founder at Dignity Moves. And I just want to applaud the city council for this afternoon and for considering this project. The Dignity Village is literally, it takes a village. And we want to thank the city for its partnership and the generosity of John Sobrato and the donors who have made this project a reality. And with the land and the donations, that's a value of $14 million, making this a unique public-private partnership in building cost-effective and quick solutions to help unhoused neighbors. And the data speaks for itself. Last year, under your leadership, the city saw a 10.7 reduction in its unsheltered homeless population, whilst the rest of the state saw a 10.3 increase. That's a delta of 20% due to your leadership. And I also want to say about the local preference, by identifying a radius around the site, it offers a fair and dignified offer to shelter live-in for those living on the streets in the immediate vicinity and chance them for the rest of the neighborhood to reclaim its public spaces. In no way will this criminalize homelessness. In fact, we are offering dignified solutions and legitimate shelter for those people to come in. So with the city's approval of this project and coupled with the county's approval of 74 beds for the Salvation Army's project in San Jose earlier today, that will bring the total of 225 beds for Dignity Moves for San Jose. And over the course of 10 years, it will serve 4,500 people, and that just so happens to be your unsheltered population number today. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Be patient. Quote, "San Jose has not adequately evaluated its efforts to mitigate health and safety issues related to encampments. It has not developed performance measures to evaluate how well its programs are mitigated health and safety risks. This is the most glaring issue the audit pointed out, and rather than address it, you just pass off this fake news as if it's a witch hunt. You act as if you've never seen the audit report, but there's pictures of you holding it after a golf tournament. You keep doing alternate fax pressers, but then there's quotes like this that leak out. Quote, "Our goal is not to just shuffle people off around the city. I think it is a terrible use of taxpayer dollars, and it is horribly disruptive for our most vulnerable neighbors. Doing so would be the definition of insanity." And here we are, voting on insanity. Item two of the mayor's memo says to quote compassionately resolve encampments, which is just hilarious wordplay, but gives no metrics, which is something the audit repeatedly faults the city on. There's no hard timelines or expectations of anyone except unhoused people anywhere in the memo. The memo further states, quote, "South San Jose neighbors have taken on four EIH communities and one safe parking site and deserve to realize the direct benefits. The disconnect and sense of entitlement here are rich. There is a south-side camp that doesn't get regular shower visits and has suffered three deaths this year. When I reached out to the city for help on a quick resource fair on mental health and addiction, I was told they didn't have the time for people I think deserve to realize the direct benefits of mental health and addiction services while they are still grieving the most recent death. These are the people at the Cherry Avenue EIH site." Today's Guardian article on $100 million sweep industry, it's estimated that overdoses go up 30% after sweeps and hospitalizations and deaths rise after frequent sweeps. We are at 60...
Thank you. Your time is up. Back to the council.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, everyone who spoke. I want to start with a few thank yous, and then we'll make some additional comments and turn to colleagues. First and foremost, I want to thank John and Sue Sobrato for stepping up early and often to help the city address its homelessness crisis. In this case, helping us pioneer an innovative approach. For the first time, we're using a long-term, low-cost lease of private land. The Sobratos are allowing the city to lease this parcel for just $1 per year for 10 years to advance one of the solutions to homelessness. And these 150 individual sleeping cabins will give safety, stability, and dignity to people who would otherwise be left in the uncertainty and insecurity of life on the streets. So they are truly enabling us to transform lives. Also, I want to thank Dignity Moves, Elizabeth Funk and Joe Price, who you just heard from, and the entire team there, and the donors who came together to also help us offset the costs that taxpayers would bear in standing up this site. Specifically, I want to thank Peter and Susanna Pao, and their gift came through SHP Christian Foundation, the Valhalla Foundation, Vinod and Niru Kosla, who generously contributed, Preston and Carolyn Butcher, and the six anonymous private donors. So we had a number of individuals and family foundations who leaned in and contributed dollars in addition to the land that the Sobratos are providing. Also, I want to thank the city team under the leadership of city manager Jennifer McGuire, Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox, and everyone in the box, Omar, Jim, Reagan, Andrew, we've all, and now Matt and the mighty Public Works team. Spent a lot of time. This is really a cross-functional effort. We have many different leaders from different teams coming together to enable us to move forward this project. Also, I want to thank everyone on the council, all of my colleagues, for supporting this and other interim housing sites, and specifically council members Batra, Jimenez, Foley, and Cohen for collaborating on this project and the group memo that we brought forward. So I want to just make a few comments about the group memo, what it is, what it isn't, what the rationale for it is. You know, today, we're really focusing on the specifics of this Villa del Oro interim housing site. I do hope, I'll just say as an aside, I hope we can leverage learnings from this to apply to the remaining projects in the pipeline. Cherry and Cerone, in particular. The fact that we are able to build this as quickly as we are and at what we estimate to be about $89,000 per unit is a big deal. It allows us to stretch our dollars to help more folks. In terms of this specific project and our group memo, what we've outlined is a framework that I hope can be applied to other sites. And what it basically says is, when we invest in a solution to homelessness, we need to begin to end unsheltered homelessness in the vicinity of that solution. The neighborhood that takes on these solutions, and in this area, we have seen again and again, the community has said yes multiple times to interim housing and safe parking sites. There needs to be a positive impact in that part of town. And so what is in the memo is a reaffirmation of a local preference strategy. That's not to say exclusive, but a preference, which allows us to first conduct outreach efforts and preferred placement for those experiencing homelessness in the vicinity. We've defined that as a mile and a half. To answer one of the questions posed during public comment, the estimate at this point is that Villa del Oro has significantly more beds than there are people within that mile-and-a-half radius. I'll also note that just up the road at Branham and Monterey, this summer, we will be opening an interim housing site with 204 units, not far from this site as well. And while we'll be focused along that Monterey corridor, there may be others in South San Jose who are supported by that development. After offering housing, whether an interim site at Villa del Oro, Branham and Monterey, or another site, or permanent housing options, if and when they are available, to everyone within 1.5 miles of the site multiple times, the memo calls on us to abate the remaining encampments. The goal is not to abate people. There should be enough capacity at Villa del Oro and Monterey-Branham, expected to open this summer, to accommodate all unhoused residents in the area. But if folks reject the offer to come indoors, we should abate. There needs to be accountability. And I know it's uncomfortable to talk about, but I talk to our outreach teams. I get the straight scoop out in the field and go to the encampments myself. The truth is, we do frequently see a portion, not a majority, but a portion of folks consistently refusing shelter and housing. We cannot, in the long run, maintain the trust and support of our community and continue to ask them to tax themselves to embrace the solutions of homelessness if there is not a strong incentive and some accountability for at a minimum, accepting basic dignified shelter. These are individual, brand-new sleeping cabins with onsite security, sanitation, supportive services, meals. At a minimum, we need people to accept that shelter and basic services when it is offered, and we need to increasingly create the conditions and incentives for that when people are repeatedly given that opportunity. So this does seek to create that incentive and to preserve our progress. Now, I do want to say to that point, we are not in a position right now to enforce a no-encampment or no-return zone within a mile-and-a-half radius. We simply do not have the places for people to go at that sufficient scale, nor do we have the staff capacity to enforce it. So that is not something we're able to do today. What the memo does seek to do is in two specific areas that have been significantly impacted for a long time now and pose particular risks, including to our ability to achieve our Vision Zero goals and to keep critical water infrastructure safe, there is a request to do a very focused no-return zone in two specific sites. So again, I think it's just common sense that when we ask communities to repeatedly take on the solutions to homelessness and embrace these sites, that we work with them to improve the quality of life issues in the vicinity of their neighborhood so that we can all enjoy our public space and support our environmental goals, our small businesses, and help people transition into shelter and more permanent housing. So I think we've, I think I've covered it there. I do have a question, but I want to hear from colleagues first, and then I'll come back to it. Councilmember Batra, this is in your district. I'll let you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for describing, especially the memo, what it is and what it is not. I want to say, I want to thank the same people you wanted to thank and you have thanked. I also want to thank the people who came and made comments about how we are handling or not handling homelessness, whether we should abate or not. We hear your comments, and we take those into account in terms of anything we are going to be proposing here or we have proposed here. So we appreciate your input, and we'd like you to also hear what we are trying to do and understand what it is and what it is not. Villa del Oro site is not the first site to get the interim housing in South San Jose, in that vicinity of the D2-D10. There have been other interim sites built. But Villa del Oro is unique in many ways. As Mayor described, that this is the first and the only private property on which we are building the interim housing. And it is being given to us at $1 a year and guaranteed for 10 years. So we are able to make that investment very comfortably, that we are going to be able to house the people there in a proper manner. And we're... Now, it is also coming at a lower cost than some of our other sites have come in, which has lowered the cost from where we were. But I want to make a comment that even this low level isn't going to be enough for taking care of all the people we need to take care of, and hence, the other alternatives to come to reduce costs once, like Councilmember Dawn and I have proposed in other places, and also the sleeping sites proposals, which are being comprehensively evaluated. We will need more of those congregate shelters, all of the above, in order to get the 4,600 or so people we have on unsheltered to the shelter place. Living unsheltered isn't better off for anybody, the sheltered around them or the unsheltered. So we have to find a way to get them out of there. The last one, on the Villa del Oro's uniqueness. Since it's a 10-year thing, it gives us about six months, for six to nine months for a person to be able to get to the path of self-sufficiency in an interim house. We have a potential that we'll be able to help about 3,000 people over the 10-year period and get them from unsheltered to their own shelters and be able to rebuild their life. Because these are not purely shelters. These are shelters with tools and services which make them become self-sufficient after their time to rebuild it. So those are all the good stuff on it. Now, the community around the Villa del Oro, within the 1.5 mile, you heard it from one of them, they have had few other sites where the interim housing was built. And they expected, and they were told, that when we build the interim housing, we get the... neighborhood becomes better off. The neighborhood becomes better off if it is cleaner. It doesn't have to deal with the same things what it dealt with before. So the community is accepting one more EIH or interim housing cautiously because they want to see that the neighborhood does become better off. And mayor described some of the actions we are taking to make that neighborhood better off. Because the community which accepts this thing, like he said, needs to be able to benefit from that. If their neighborhood had the encampments and they were unmanaged, or whatever reasons they were felt to be, not like the rest of us, so the neighborhood needs to be able to get better. So the encampments have to go. But they don't have to be. We're not scattering them away. We are saying, these are the people who have a local preference. They will go into the EIH, the one we are building, and they have an opportunity. And people talked about it, that, hey, the EIH, they have to have this much. Please compare it to what they have today in living in a tent with the weather conditions which we had in the month of January, February. EIH is not going to be worse than that one. EIH is not going to be worse than that one. Nobody can build an EIH or an interim house which is going to give less facilities than what they have today. So please consider that one when we are talking about those. So I'd like to point out that the community is cautiously accepting the EIH, provided they feel that they have gotten better off. And in order to make them feel better off, we have the memo, the five signature memo, and we are supporting those. I do have a couple of clarifications and questions to make here, so I want to use my time wisely. First question, in the next steps, Omar, you have mentioned we have to create a CAC. I thought we have already clarified that in the month of November, a CAC was established, it's functioning, it's operational, and there are people who constantly meet and discuss. What is the next step in CAC?
Uh, Councilmember Batra, sorry. I clarified that that slide should have said "established" ED on the end, and Reagan clarified during her comments that the CAC is established and functioning. So that, that issue is, is squared away. Uh, I think we're all, all clear on that one.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Okay. The second one, the property we are using is less than what's totally available. Is, is it likely that if you need more parking there, you will be able to use that unused property?
Yeah, Councilmember, that is a possibility. The property owner does want to keep a portion of the frontage on Villa Del Oro undeveloped, and so he's been part of our design meetings and has asked that we try and not just spread out. He, he did, um, agree to a slight expansion. We did add some additional parking spaces from the concept phase in October to final design today, so we added some 30 spaces, if you will. But he's requesting that we not move into that final piece of undeveloped land at this point in time.
Okay. So, so this is a potentially could be used, because one of the things we have run into with the RV parking, we are running into short supply of the number of parking spaces we needed. It's likely that we may end up with the same situation here, so if we will have that option to do that, that would be great. Okay? All right? Okay. So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to accept our memo, which, which clearly says that we accept the recommendation for the construction and contract and agreement, and with those additions, um, which are listed as 1, 2, 3, 4, for, for preserving the progress and how to give the local preference, how much outreach to do, that describes in number 2, preserving the progress, number 3, and number 4 specifically calls the areas where no encampment.
Thanks, Councilmember. And just to clarify, sorry.
One second.
Okay. I, I think I heard Councilmember Dewan first, but thank you, Councilmember. No, no, appreciate it. Um, I just want to clarify, since you started reading them, you're not making any modifications.
I have not made any modifications.
Okay. So the, you're, you're moving the group memo, second by Dewan. I know there is a, another memo from, memo from our colleague, Councilmember Cohen, who's going to speak next, and, and we'll discuss, well, we'll hear what he has to say. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to staff for getting this to this point. All of these, the combination of all of the things we work on as solutions is important for us to do a holistic, uh, program across the city. And obviously, I really appreciate the, the fact that Cerato and others have stepped up to help us on this one, and makes this one even more attractive perhaps than some of the others, although clearly in North San Jose, at Ceroni, we have the state funding, so that's very helpful as well. It's important for us to take advantage of opportunities when we have sites that are good for the, for this kind of work, and make sure that we can make them work in addition to our city's strategy of trying to spread solutions out across the city, which I think is also vitally important. I want to ask some questions based on what I heard in the presentation and just what I've been kind of pondering over this, some of the details of this memo. Just a quick question, are the bar charts, you don't have to put them back up, but the bar charts that show activity within certain distances, the 1.5-mile distance, those are activity in addition to what's in the other bars, or are they, are they inclusive? So when it says...
The trash services are separate.
Cause it's at half a mile, has a number, and then it has one and a half miles, and has another number.
They're, they're exclusive.
They're inclusive, so it's really, it's not saying that there's 70 whatever on the, on the third bar that are separate from what's within the half mile, it includes what's within the half mile.
Yeah, those are...
Each level is cumulative effectively?
Each level is cumulative. I guess I'm trying to ask that question, because that's important, a piece of information, I think, to understand this.
Let me just double check and get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. That's not the most important question, but I wanted to understand that. So far in, I know there's been this talk about in, in this part of South San Jose, between District 2 and 10, and within a short, small distance, there are, there's a kind of an overabundance. I, I don't think we have yet, we're at the point where there's an overabundance anywhere, but there's a larger number of sites being built there than in other parts of the city at this time. How many sites are currently open and available, and how many will be when this, when the work is done at all the sites? In, just in that one and a half mile radius?
In the one and a half mile radius, or...
Well, I think so. I mean, I think that's what we're hearing, is that within this radius, there's a certain number of sites, and I heard like, I've heard numbers 550 or 700, I don't know exactly, I just wanted to confirm.
I think I can, I can answer you that one.
Wait, if you know the answer, go ahead.
Your both numbers are correct. The 700 number is after you include the 150 beds, which will be added later.
So right now, there's 550, and there will be 700 when this is done? Is that the current, is that, is about right? Is that about right?
Councilmember, are you including supportive parking in your numbers? So is it roof Ferrari, roof Ferrari expansion, Monterey, Bernal, and Santa Teresa? Are those the sites?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds like Monterey Branham.
Monterey Branham in there as well. If, if you're getting at that 500 number.
Monterey Branham's probably outside the one and a half mile mark, but if you are including it, that probably gets you to the 700-ish.
With Villa Del Oro as well.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that, I just was curious. So we're, we're about three quarters or two-thirds or three-quarters of the way to the full capacity of what we expect in that area. Is that right?
So just, I think you said, um, there and available, and I just want to be clear that, that for basically all of our supply, when it opens, people are very, very eager, so...
I don't mean available in the sense that they're open sites right now. How many beds are there that are, that are usable? I know they're, hopefully, they're all being used, but I'm just curious about this.
How many placements are there not open necessarily?
I didn't expect this question to be so difficult, but let's, let's move, let's move on to that, too. I'm, I'm just, I was just trying to understand where we're going, and at what point we can start to say, yes, this number is a capacity at which we should be able to see a measurable impact in a vicinity and across the city. I mean, that's sort of the, and I don't know that we know the answer to that question, but I'm trying to just understand some of these numbers a little bit.
Yeah, so just briefly on that point, I will tell you that we, we are working right now, actually, with the county on, to get to that, how, how much do we need relative to how many people are out there? We need to understand on a more regular cadence, how many unsheltered, how many people are living unsheltered at any given time, and so we're pushing to get to that as close as we can to that point. But we don't, that's, that's, that's an elusive number for reasons that we can talk about another time.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. This is not, this is not a, an easy math. So what concerned me about some of the discussions we're having, well, first of all, let me just say, I think it's really important to prioritize people for first placement at sites in some vicinity, in some location around a site. So I, certainly, the, the first recommendation in the memo that we signed is really important to say, look, the, the, this area around one and a half miles should be prioritized for placement in the sites. And that, and that includes, you know, RVs that are there and saying, we, you know, make sure that they get opportunities to find placement at one of our RV sites, maybe not necessarily the one nearest, but the, but one of them. By the time this opens, we will have two official city RV sites open, at least, that's my hope. Um, the, the, what I'm, was I concerned about is, what, are we, by, by saying that we have to codify in a memo, locations that we will be focused on, what are we saying about some of the future sites that we're going to be building? Because I know that, you know, my intention, when we bring back the contract for Ceroni, and we have a discussion, was not necessarily to have a memo in my district that says, here's the areas in District 4 and in North San Jose that need to be prioritized. What is the procedure by which staff will try to prioritize and work with the council office and the district on making sure that we prioritize the appropriate places as we open more of these sites across the city?
So I'll, I'll start that one and then pass it down, down the line. I, I think, Councilmember Cohen, you're raising a point that's, I think, an important one for, for frankly, you and your colleagues to, to work through in this moment, right? Because there are some potential, uh, different opportunities. There is a way, that I'm sure Reagan will speak to in just a moment, about how the geographic preference part of that works, but in terms of identifying portions or parts of a community, I think that's a thing that you all, as the sort of policy direction, need to say, this is the way we, we want to handle that. And I think we, as the implementers, will then figure out the most appropriate way to, to make that happen. Reagan and Andrea?
Councilmember, I can speak to our, um, current practices, where we have an established community advisory committee that's in partnership with the council office, and we get feedback from the community advisory committee and the council office, because the council office hears from your constituents and your neighborhoods regularly about what the, where the encampments are and what are the areas of concern. And so we collectively, between those stakeholders, we identify, um, the priority areas, or in some cases, we identify a certain, um, radius or area surrounding the, but the housing department, um, we try very hard to be flexible and work with the council office so we can meet your community's needs.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then my, my, my objective here is to sort of retain the flexibility and that communication as opposed to being overly prescriptive. I'm just concerned about what city staff will take this as, as precedent or not in terms of some of the other things we'll be doing in other parts of the city. And I'll just say, as we opened Berry S's safe parking site, or as we've approved it and gotten the contract and done the work on it, we've never had a detailed conversation on the dais about where RVs will be first prioritized to move in, but we've had many conversations kind of privately as staff to council office. I've had conversations with residents in the area who I've counsel patience towards to say, well, we can't move these RVs now, but when we get this site open, we're going to move these particular RVs, but we've never codified it anywhere. And I'm just nervous about a precedent of, well, the council didn't direct us to, to clear a certain area, and therefore, we're going to have trouble later when we open the sites. And that's kind of the question I'm asking here, is, you know, for future sites, what is this, how does, how do you interpret what, what our future activities will be, so that we know as council members how to drive this improvements, drive these improvements going forward?
And if I could just weigh in first to answer your question about, um, the bar charts, it is cumulative. So just to answer that. I, I just do want to add that from the beautify SJ sort of abatement criteria that we've used along with our strategy, we would be talking with, whether it's the police department or the fire department, those are all a part of our risk factors assessment, and we use that to prioritize. And health and safety has always been a, a critical issue, especially in places where the location is a site that we would consider manageable, but the conditions have now tipped to a point where we're not getting the cooperation that we expect. So in the case of, and I'm going to use the, um, the case, you call it in your memo, the Monterey Road underpass, we call it Great Oaks at Bernal, that is a very challenging condition, given that it's, um, not accessible through a public space. We have, uh, private commercial on one side, we have railroad tracks on another, and a very steep embankment up to a roadway. Um, and so we have access issues, and then that then leads us to significant condition issues. So giving us the flexibility, you know, over time or to date, to prioritize these places. But in, in case like that, we would say the conditions now trigger issues. And thus, I just want to point out, the costs associated that we lay out in the memo, it's really, it's related to whether deterrents will work or not, because the deterrents, there is not a one-size-fits-all deterrent plan for encampments. Every place is different, both site-based as well as conditions.
Right. And my, my objective here is to make sure that, uh, we continue to have some thought that goes into what we're doing in terms of what are the sites that are most crucial? What are the sites that are most dangerous for people, that are most dangerous for residents? And make sure that we are allowing that flexibility going forward also as part of this. And also understand that we don't want to overpromise to the residents, while we want to say, we're going to try, we know that until we reach a certain capacity in our city, we're still going to have people living in unsheltered conditions, and they're going to gravitate towards sites that they believe are best suited for them, and that makes it hard for us to promise that certain sites will remain a certain way while we try, and I'm, you know, we've been trying in everywhere we do this, it's not a guarantee, and I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, and Councilmember, I just want to say, so we're talking about about 700, you know, in capacity down in, uh, D2, including the ones that are planned, you know, uh, we talked about D10 already, there's roughly 1,000 beds current and planned in D3, 600 beds, you know, current and planned in D6, and still, to the point, many, many more people. We, we do need, to your question of capacity, we still have 1.7 folks entering the system for every one that goes out of it in terms of households, right? So to get to your question, how do we get the numbers right? We still do have to address that, that issue so that we can shrink down what's going on.
Right, right. And I'm, I'm going to just sort of ask for grace from my colleagues, cause I, cause we've amazingly had now a system that yells at us visually when we reach our 10 minutes, and I know that I'm over 10, I apologize about that, but I just, I, I'll get to my memo now, and then I'll, then I'll, I'll wrap it up. I was concerned with the, even though I signed the memo, the, with Section 2 and its prescriptive nature about the tools we would use for, uh, RV parking, and the fact that we've had such long and extensive conversations about how to address RV parking as a council, and wanted to be a little bit more general and allow the staff to sort of determine the kinds of tools we use as we move forward. So I submitted a memo at the end of the day yesterday that sort of reworded Section 2. I don't think it changes materially the objective behind this, the message, and I would like to ask for a friendly amendment to include my version 2, A, B, and C, and replacing the 2, A, B, and C in the original memo with a couple of amendments that I hopefully worked out with Councilmember Batra before.
And as I turn to Councilmember Batra, who made the motion, I also just want to clarify that your recommendation there does not preclude any tools, it's just attempting to be less prescriptive. Is that fair to say?
Right.
You're not saying you're taking, I don't know, 72-hour or inoperative or something else off the table, you're just looking for it to be less prescriptive, is that...
Right. So it does three things, I mean, it does two things, really. It adds a line that specifically asks for people in RVs within one and a half miles to be of, offered a placement at our existing RV parking sites, which isn't currently in one of the recommendations in the memo. And then it also combines the other two items into one that just would say, utilize tools regarding oversized vehicles and RV parking available under California Vehicle Code and that council has previously adopted to identify locations for enforcement. So it, it, I'm adding a phrase about combining the California Vehicle Code items with the San Jose City ordinances and allowing staff to utilize those, um, to address RV parking within the one and a half miles that's in the beginning of Section 2. I'm asking if that's okay?
Councilmember Batra?
Yeah. So Councilmember Cohen, in regarding the RV, as I pointed out in the bottom, in the analysis, it covers that, so I have no objection accepting that piece because you're just moving it from the background material to the front, which is a great thing. Regarding the tools, as long as we utilize all the tools available, but the ones which are going to require expensive effort and a lot of time for us to be able to use, like the, the one we have discussed, to put a sign up there that no large vehicle here, that's not a tool generally available to the city, because that one is with specific traffic analysis and Department of Traffic and Transportation analysis to be done, and when that analysis is done, number one, that analysis has to be requested, it has to be scheduled, it has to be paid for and all that. So the fact that we are building the CIH, we want to be able to get those people moved in there, and the encampments cleared within some reasonable time, knowing that we here get, uh, the requests for TOT to do the study, which is what I tried to clarify during the, when the ordinances 8.1 and 8.2 were... when the ordinances 8.1 and 8.2 were proposed, we are only allowed to use that for three schools. We cannot use it generally anywhere.
Well, let me ask that question of staff then. And I don't know, we don't have a DOT, somebody from DOT to answer this, or maybe we do. The item in the original--
I'm going to ask Heather Hoshi, Deputy Director--
I see, and I'll ask the question while she's walking to save time. We have tools that we would try to use in various places around the city, we've put them in place. Obviously, if we're saying, if we leave the memo the way it's written now, we're implying that these only can be temporary removals based on some of the other items in our code and state vehicle code, but that we wouldn't be able to implement no parking areas. But I'm not convinced that that's the case. I mean, we have put up no parking signs in parts of the city without an extensive analysis. Are we suggesting that, and from going forward, any place that we say there was no oversized vehicle parking, that there's some cost to doing that, beyond the cost of the signs?
Heather Hoshi, Deputy Director with DOT. There is enforcement costs related to any installation of signs or new restrictions that aren't contemplated today in our enforcement model.
Yes, so it's an enforcement question, obviously. That's going to be true no matter what we do, I imagine. But the fact of the matter is, you know, we can do some quick analysis and say, this is a place that we, that should be off limits, and based on some quick analysis, get some, put some signs up without some major, I mean, I think there's a misunderstanding about how restrictive the policy is we put in place. I'm just confused about that a little bit because I think we're having this discussion about whether or not we need to specify what tools to use about, you know, no parking on certain streets. And I don't think that limiting that to only using expired vehicle or inoperable vehicle or 72-hour is necessarily going to get us anywhere because we already kind of have those tools and we've never seen that help in parts of the city. So I'm wondering whether we've, by doing some of the things we did recently on vehicle enforcement, whether we've given ourselves more tools or not.
I think the short answer is yes, we've definitely given ourselves some more tools. I think we've expanded the tools. So, specific to the actions taken on the oversized vehicle and the overnight parking was to add that restriction as a towable offense. So we've expanded that. Where we had those restrictions before and they were just parking citation eligible, you have increased potentially the stick approach to emphasize a little bit more those vehicles moving, whereas a citation wasn't necessarily going to make those vehicles move. So you have expanded the toolbox. I would say DOT is very supportive of having flexibility and use all the options that are on the toolbox and not kind of boxing ourselves into specific things. Because, as was previously mentioned, all of these scenarios are very different, and we need to take into consideration what is transpiring on the street and what particular restrictions we can and cannot enforce legally. So having more tools in the toolbox and using all of them will be beneficial.
Yeah.
Councilmember, the one thing I did want to add, though, just to get to Councilmember Batra's point, so the flexibility point, it sounds like you all have reached a consensus about that, but Councilmember Batra is actually, is not wrong in this respect, right? The, what Heather just described involved, you're going to have to get some kind of engineer's analysis for that particular tool in the toolbox, right? The other ones that were in the original memo have some other flexible, immediate-use kind of ways that will require a resolution, right, to come back. So there are some additional hurdles, but it does create flexibility, just so that everybody's clear about those two pieces. So there's potential additional sort of resource challenges, just want to make sure that that part was clear. I don't think that it's, it's an accurate, I think, assessment to say that that resolution in the memo, et cetera, would be additional items to do.
Yeah. Look, I apologize again for this is taking, but this is important to me only because I'm a little bit concerned based on this conversation about how we're going to handle some of the other sites in the future. We're opening the RV parking site, and I'm going to go back to that. In District 4, we've told residents, you know, like, you know, Sierra Road is getting more and more RVs on it, but you're within, you know, you're close to the Berryessa site. When that happens, we're going to take those RVs, we're going to tell people, here's a place for you down the street at this site. But if we don't then say this street has limits to parking, another group of RVs will come in right behind them. So, I mean, I just want to understand, what are our options here? And maybe figure out how we address those in a future discussion, if not today. But I'm also concerned about the way this was over-prescriptive because it implies that this is the same tools we'll use in the future at some of these other places. And I just want, I'm being very, I'm being, I'm just, was nervous about the way this was presented in the context of everything we're trying to do citywide. But, you know, I don't think, I don't think it's a major concern on this particular place. I'm trying to, though, put in place something that's, that we can make sense of for kind of a precedent-setting, you know, for everything that we're doing across the city.
Councilmember, one comment about, this memo does not restrict you for what you do with the Berryessa site. It will not restrict you from any, this is applying to--
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'll, let me leave it at that. I asked for a friendly amendment for the whole thing. Well, you've accepted one element, which is good, and I'll yield my time now since I'm way over. It's not my time to yield, it's someone else's time. I will, I will stop talking.
The council's, it's the public's time. Councilor Cohen, thank you. And look, I think you raise, setting aside the specifics of, and thank you, Heather, setting aside some of the specifics around tow authority and engineering assessment, I think your general point about local outreach, where we abate, where, if anywhere, we do no encampment, what does that mean for tents versus vehicles? I think you're right, that this has been a fairly one-by-one bespoke approach. Now, I think staff has pretty clear protocols, and as was described, engage as stakeholders, including the council office, to define an approach and a strategy in a site-specific way. One of the things we adopted in the March message was starting to bring, I think, a little more uniformity to that. One thing we talked about was, you know, there was this question of, and the council said yes for now, but, you know, should we just say, within two walkable blocks of any of these sites, we're just not going to have encampments? And so I think we are moving toward or grappling with where can you have uniformity, but frankly, in a lot of these, it's what does the community need to be comfortable and what are the specific issues there? Cherry Ave being an example, Water Resource Protection Zone is something we've talked about, is what we need to do, not just, I mean, stormwater permit now, but also prior to that because of the impact there and what it took for the community to be bought in. So I think we are still in a world of taking these somewhat case-by-case, as frustrating as that can be. Let me turn to Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the discussion and want to thank Councilmember Batra for, you know, doing a lot of this work. And we've had many conversations, including with the mayor and other folks that are on the memo. I'm supportive of what's before us. This used to be part of District 2, obviously now it's part of District 10. But I think as some of the residents have told me, this is South San Jose irrespective of the district. Many people don't recognize the lines, if you will, and so their interpretation is all this is happening in one concentrated area. And I know, Omar, you listed some of what's happening in other districts, I appreciate that. It's often meant to blunt some of the, some of the comments, it reflects the, in my mind and the minds of my constituents, you know, the concentration. So I appreciate that, but it feels, and I don't disagree with my residents, that a lot's happening, not everything is happening, but a lot's happening in District 2 and South San Jose generally. And so, so I appreciate all the efforts from the council members in that area. And so I just wanted to also acknowledge, it's just the natural tension, right, with trying to find a solution to this, to help the folks on the street, while also, you know, our job is to listen to the residents, including the folks in the cars, living in, I mean, those are our residents as well, right? But also the housed residents, some of the concerns that they have. And I think that's the natural sort of tension that I consistently feel when I'm talking to folks during office hours or even here, right? That just this push and pull as it relates to what's the best thing to do. And so, again, supportive of what's been proposed. I appreciate Councilmember Cohen's comments, and I too, I've been trying to wrap my head around how what we're doing here projects out to the rest of the city and how that's used and utilized, and whether it's scalable, if you will, or how it's going to sort of take shape as we continue to open up sites. I wanted to take this opportunity to lift up an issue that we're currently seeing, since we're all talking about different things that are happening in our respective districts. And one of those is off Chinawith Avenue. We have currently, I think upwards of like 12, 13 RVs right on Chinawith Avenue. And the reason I pointed out is that this is the same, again, area, South San Jose, that's really stepped up and done our part. It's actually a few blocks away from the Branham-Monterey Road site, so it's not very far from there. I wanted to just lift up the issues related to traffic safety issues as folks are coming out of, say, War Admiral, or not War Admiral, I forget the Rooster Avenue, there's several streets right off Chinawith that you turn off and make a right to go towards Snell. And some of the RVs that are there that don't move are impeding the visibility of traffic, uncalming traffic, and there's a lot of folks that speed through there. And so just wanted to lift that up, hopefully staff can go check that out. And I know, Olympia, you were on a text, email thread recently, you said you were going to loop in DOT, so I very much appreciate that. Also, in addition to that, I think this place is unique in that a lot of the RVs, they're in between the sidewalk and the bike lane, but right on the other side of the sidewalk is just the sound wall. And so I've witnessed, as I live by there and drive by there every single day, some students walking, they look pretty young, so I assume they're like from Oak Grove High School or Santa Teresa High School, getting off the bus, walking along that pathway. And as they are walking on the sidewalk in between the RVs and the sound wall, they effectively disappear for a little while as they pass through the whole lane of RVs. And so that's been brought to my attention by some of the residents, and I think it's something we just need to be thoughtful about. And additionally, I know we have a sensitive receptor buffer 150 feet setback from parks. Chinawith Park is right there, right next to some of these RVs, and so I just wanted to also mention that to staff, if you can check that out. But with that being said, that was it. I just wanted to lift that up. I think it's important to mention publicly, one, so the residents know that I'm sort of sharing their concerns. I have similar concerns. But I also have told them that this is happening all around the city, this isn't specific to this street. We're trying to grapple with this in District 4, District 8, wherever, right? There's, all over the city. And I take comfort in knowing that at least, what I've shared with my residents, that the D4 RV parking site, which we appreciate you doing that work, September or so, September 2024, is that, is that the estimated sort of date of completion for the RV parking in--
Berryessa.
Berryessa, in District 4, is that?
I think it's a little longer, September 2024, so it's a little longer than that. I think we're looking at more like January. I know there's aspirations for earlier, and we're endeavoring very quickly to make that happen, yes. So it is not September 2024.
Okay, all right. Well, strike that, whoever's listening.
Is that on, you're talking Villa del Oro or you're talking Berryessa?
You're talking Berryessa.
We're talking Berryessa Safe Park.
Yes, you're talking Berryessa, it is not September 2024.
Okay. Well, you're probably just going to get some additional questions.
Well, that raises some new questions. All right.
So sorry about that. But I appreciate all the work. This is not easy stuff. And I know that we consistently try to grapple with this, so thank you for that. Look forward to supporting the recommendation, and I know we're going to continue to try to find solutions.
Councilmember, may I?
Yes, please.
Just very, the 150-foot buffer that you all acted upon, is it related to schools?
Thank you for that. I asked my team that, they said, yeah, we think parks is included, but I wasn't sure. But, so, anyway, so, okay. There is a school near there, I think it's a little past 150 feet, it isn't. And that's Hayes Elementary, is not too far from there. But anyhow, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, appreciate you highlighting those concerns and expressing your South San Jose pride. Can I just ask, as a very quick follow-up on Councilmember Jimenez's point? When we open Branham-Monterey and then Villa del Oro, and someone is living in an RV, rather than wait for a safe parking site or spot to open up, if they are willing to accept housing, do we have the resources and tools we need to help them park it somewhere, either at that site or somewhere safely? Can we facilitate that transition? If somebody says, hey, Branham-Monterey looks great, I'm currently living, I think we sometimes conceptually imagine someone's coming out of a tent encampment, but can you just help us understand, if they're in an RV and they're willing to accept a spot at Villa del Oro or Branham-Monterey, how we would handle that?
So we, we don't disallow RVs parking at our interim housing sites, however, a lot of, at many of our sites, parking is limited. So we'll do our best to find some other parking alternative for this individual. So we want to remove any kind of barrier to someone participating in our interim housing program.
Great, thank you. And if it's inoperable, or they, for whatever reason, are willing to walk away from it, do we have the resources we need to do that? I know we spoke to that a little bit in the March message.
So for housing, that could be in our direct client assistance. Again, we want, we use that to remove any barriers to participation in our programs. There's other issues with like towing and disposing of an inoperable RV.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to assure everyone that if folks in the vicinity do live in an RV and are willing to accept housing, we will do everything in our power to help them accept it. Okay, let's go on to Councilmember Dawn.
Thank you, Steph, for the report. I just have a quick question. We can anticipate that there's a lot of RV unsheltered residents or resident out there who will continue to refuse any type of help, if you will. And it doesn't matter how many times you offer it, they're going to say no. At that point, what are our option or course of action?
Again, if, using the encampment management approach that we have right now, if it's in a location where it is deemed manageable, then we would continue to manage that location and work with them to be cooperative in our trash services. If it's in a location that is not allowed, then there would be an abatement.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Lot of work, lot of information, and it'd be nice to actually get this moving forward so we can move some unhoused into these EIHs. But I'm a little confused about what we're voting on. We have a joint memo, and then we have the Cohen memo. Councilmember Batra, which part of the Cohen memo did you accept in your friendly amendment?
Councilmember talked to me about one item, which is probably not properly described in there, about the RVs. I'm okay in totally accepting that the RV situation, because this was consistent with what was below. The other portion, which Councilmember is asking for, replacing item 2 with his, I'm not accepting that one, because I think the item 2 is what the community needs to be able to see that we are actually making the progress.
Okay, so basically, you're not accepting his memo. So as far as, I'm just trying to figure out what we're voting on here. His memo replaces your number 2, or our number 2--
Our memo.
--with A, B, and C, and you're saying no to all of those. I'm not sure what you said yes to. I'm trying to be specific so I understand.
My understanding is that 2A is aligned in both, that it's the same. So 2A is included just in the group memo already. I think Councilman Cohen was maybe reordering them. For item 2B, I did not hear any opposition to that recommendation, I think that was added. And so that simply, that simply leaves item 2C where there's a bit of a difference of opinion. My interpretation is that in practice, what staff will ultimately do is actually not different in the sense that there's a variety of tools here. The group memo highlights--
These 2 and B, just to be clear, 2 and B.
2 and B are effectively included, accepted.
Right.
But 2C is not, but in practice, we just had a whole discussion about this. I don't, I think Councilmember Batra, as I heard, did not want to simply limit to the ordinances that were recently approved, but wanted to highlight that there are other tools, such as inoperable, 72-hour rule, et cetera, that could also be used to increase the incentives for folks to accept housing or safe parking or to move them from the two-block radius, for example.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. The, I'm concerned about the 72-hour parking restrictions on RVs and that we might be towing or considering towing RVs that are lived in-- might be towing or considering towing RVs that are lived in, and then where does that live, leave the occupant? So, I, I heard some mention of signs being installed, we're not talking about being, signs being installed, that it's illegal to park here, are we? I didn't see that anywhere in a memo or your recommendation, I just wanted to confirm that, but I heard that along the dais.
Okay, so as I understand what is being debated right now, it would be inclusive of what happened at the council action prior, there's basically like a suite of, of, of tools, including potentially, you know, getting the assessment necessary to, at a given site. There's a separate question about what is the right tool, and what does that mean for subsequent related policies and all that, but, but as to your specific question, I think I understand the memos collectively to be offering that kind of, those two as, as options at those locations, including both of the ordinances that were adopted, that would require resolution, and that, that's what I understood, that if that's not...
But don't you have to come back to us to determine whether you're going to...
Yeah, if, if those were...
Put a sign up and invest in, do the study?
Yeah, so, so in a world where those...
We're not approving that, that's just a tool in the toolbox that you could come back, is that right, Heather?
Yeah, that's not being approved today, no.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I'm just trying to...
Okay.
There's a lot of discussion up here, and I just want to be really clear...
So, to your, to your point, to just make sure we're really clear, you're saying a, you know, funding and direction to do an engineering study and post-signs is not being included in this, in this direction?
That's correct, that's what I'm hearing from staff, and that if that's a possibility, that it will be coming back to council for approval, because there's obviously budget implications in, in the signage, and then the enforcement of it is the part that I'm most concerned with. I, I just have one question, and it's regarding the RVs. Under what circumstances have we towed RVs that are lived in?
We had the direction at Spring and Heading, also known as Guadalupe Gardens, that was a special project. We still have ongoing direction to complete that around Columbus Park, and that is tied to the start of construction with the new Columbus Park. And that is, Beautify is working with DOT and PD.
Councilmember, I want to add, though, and this is, this is like the sort of ugly reality of the conversation that we just probably need to have. We've had an instance in one district where an individual was in an RV in a residential area and was doing awful things on a, this elderly woman's front porch and property, and was living in the vehicle, and in that situation, their tags were expired by six months, and PD came out and said, okay, that's the tool that could be used to, to provide some relief to that elderly woman, and then our Beautify teams went out and cleaned up the, you know, waste off of the woman's porch, I mean, like, that's, that's not everybody, it's not even most people who are unhoused, let's be clear about that, but it happens, and so, having some of these, that's just another example where there isn't like a, a rule we can point to in any rulebook in the city that says, thou shalt not, we need PD because there's state laws, but sometimes, things happen where it, it's like, there's, it's a horrible situation for somebody leaving their vehicle, but it's also a horrible situation for an 80-year-old woman with her walker just trying to go in her house, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, absolutely no question about that, I, I won't argue with you there at all, I'm, I'm concerned about people who are living in their RVs, not in, who are not bad actors. Let's remove the, the bad actors from that, who just are trying to live in their RV, and we come along and say, you can't be here, and I, and then we make them unhoused, and then we don't have room for them at our EIHs. So, I'm just concerned, I'm, obviously, I, I support this, I think it's important that we have the EIH as a tool, and that we have, I can't, getting Berriessa RV park up and running will be beneficial and helpful, but, and having all of these tools is helpful, we just need to be thoughtful and, and move forward as quickly as possible, but we also have to understand that some people are living in RVs, and they're, they're polite, and they're respectful, and they pick up after themselves, and they're not bad people, they're just living in their RV because they have no place else to live, and they're not living on the streets. So, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that, thanks.
Thanks, Councilwoman Foley, I appreciate you asking those questions and, and expressing that sentiment that I know we all share. Okay, back to Councilor Cohen.
I'm just going to make a quick comment this time, and I think, I finally in my head, I've been having trouble kind of rap, explaining why it is that I'm uncomfortable by the recommendation in the memo that I signed, but I signed on Friday expressing, at the moment, reservations with this item, saying that if I had had more time, I would have not signed it until I had reworded it, but here's why I don't like item 2A in this memo, in the original memo. We have repeatedly told the residents across the city of San Jose that we cannot enforce a 72-hour parking limit, we have repeatedly told people who have RV, lived in RVs in their neighborhoods, that, sorry, even though there's some of these conditions, we just, we're not dealing with it for now until we have a safe RV parking site. And what we're putting in this memo is an indication that, hey, actually, if we wanted to, we could, and I'm really concerned about what that message that's going to send to the rest of the city, when we say, in this particular case, we're going to start enforcing the 72-hour parking rule, we're going to say, if you have expired tags, you have, we're going to tow you, we're going to say that if you have an inoperable vehicle, we're going to take you away, while we're saying to the rest of the city, we cannot deal with this problem right now until we have more places for them to go. So, I, that's what makes me very uncomfortable, because we have consistently told our residents, these are things that, while they're on the books, we're just, you know, because they're lived in, it's a different situation, and I, I get that, but I'm concerned about now saying, hey, we can do it, actually, because I'm not sure that I want to say we can do it, unless we really have a plan to do it everywhere, and, and do it equally and uniformly, and that's what concerned me about this item in this memo, that, that's why I was not sure I supported the recommendations in the memo, and why I wanted to change it, and just say, use tools available to see what we can do in these particular locations, in more general terms, and not specifically say, we're going to start in one place enforcing rules that we've told people everywhere else we can't enforce. That, that's, I'm just going to express that, and then I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Thanks, Councilman. Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you so much. So, let me, let me start by saying, everyone who works on this, thank you. This is complex and, and very challenging work, and we're, we're really trying to move forward with trying to help find safe places for people to live and be. The one thing that I am a little bit sort of concerned about, and as we move forward, I, I do support this, and I do think that we need to find places and shelter for, for the unhoused to, to live. However, you're asking us today for 10 million plus an additional 10%, which brings us a little over 11 million, and that is just for the construction of this site, there's no operating or other dollars attached to it, is there? Or am I just mistaken?
Not in the action today.
Right?
That's right. The, the, the operating costs are in the 2024, 25 base budget, and that's outlined in the memorandum.
Okay, so, you know, the, the, the concern that I have is going to be an ongoing concern, so I just want to put it out there, as we start bringing these different things together, right, in terms of trying to address, you know, the Berriessa RV, or whatever, you know, interim housing we have, or what have you, is that when these things come to us, we have a piece here, a piece there, another one here, another one there, and quite frankly, I think that at some point, at some point, it kind of keeps growing and growing and growing, and I know that we're going to talk about budget and, and all of that, but I just want to express my overall concern that, you know, in terms of sustainability, in terms of being able to think about, how do we continue doing all of this, right, and we're going to be facing a deficit? So, I just, I do support this, I think we need it, but I also think that I am concerned about the pieces that come, right, and I tend to be more big picture, I like to see the whole thing, if you're going to tell me, we're going to take half of the general fund, and we're going to use it, and here we go, then let's be, you know, honest about what we're doing, right? So, I, I feel a little bit nervous as we move forward, because, you know, yes, we need production, we need preservation, and we need everything in between, all the way, and I, I agree, but I am very, very, very concerned in terms of how do we sustain this? How do we sustain this? You know, someone told me, you know, Rosemary, we don't really have a, a problem, it's not really a, a unhoused situation, really, it's an income inequality situation, right? And so, I, I just, I just wanted to share, as we move with all these projects, that, that it is a concern, and I will say, I agree with my, my colleague, Councilmember Cohen, that while we're trying to address this and have, you know, different areas that, you know, if they have to, you know, sort of have these, these sites within their area that we're trying to, to accommodate concerns and all of that, it's great, but if you start having different sort of standards, you're going to have a lot of problems, I think, right? So, I just, I just want to share that, as we continue to move forward, and I get it, I understand that it's very complex, I understand that there are a lot of issues, I understand we can't do everything, but I also think that uniformity goes a long way, and we are a total, even though we have 10 districts, we are one city. So, I just, I just want to share that as something that I am concerned about, thank you.
So, Vice Mayor Kamau, if I'm, if I may, last year, in the budget, we did a manager's budget addendum that laid out all the sources and, and the use of funds for all of our emergency interim housing, and we have carryover direction from the council to do an update to that, so you'll see another MBA with some of this new, the new facilities and, and updated costs come your way in May.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I know that, but I also feel that I, I see the trend, and I, what I see is that that's not enough, that's not going to be enough. So, so that's why I'm expressing the concern, because I think that we really need to prepare ourselves for something bigger and greater, that, you know, in terms of impacting our general fund, that that's going to happen, so that's...
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I, I think it's a very valid concern, appreciate you raising it, I know it's been an ongoing discussion the council's been having, I, I think we will get much more detail from the city manager and her budget team as we get into the proposed operating budget, and the study sessions over the next couple of months, and move toward approving a balanced budget in June. One thing I would note, though, is I think the March message that everyone voted in favor of explicitly begins to signal this transition to lower cost, basically faster, cheaper solutions, given that we don't have the resources we need to provide interim housing, much less permanent affordable for everybody who needs it, particularly to meet our obligations under the Clean Water Act. And so, part of the reason there was so much emphasis in the message on experimenting with safe sleeping sites, taking another look at congregate shelter, exploring better implementation or expansion of a home rebound strategy, looking more at prevention, is that the truth is, we, we don't have the money to meet the need, and so, we are trying our best to find sites that are workable, especially when we have private partners who heavily subsidize the build-out of the site, but I'm also very mindful of those ongoing operating costs, and the, the truth is, neither permanent nor interim in any short period of time is going to scale to meet the need, so we will need to look at other solutions to, to continue to be in good standing with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Appreciate you flagging it, though. Okay, unless there's anything else, I think we've fairly exhausted the topic, Tony, let's vote. Great, thank you all very much, we're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Tony, do we have any?
I have no cards.
Okay, then we're adjourned, thank you all very much.